Monthly board meeting for June fourteenth. At this point, I have myself, Dulcey and Nicole in the room, John Ernst and Bob Blue online. There any board comments, Nicole?
No, thank you.
Dulcey?
No, thank you.
Bob? Um. Seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the the board meeting minutes for May ten, two thousand twenty-three? Your second?
Second.
Any comments or corrections to board meetings? I've seen none, all, and are there any negative votes in approving the board meetings? I can see none that has passed. Any public comment? Anybody in the room, public staff? Any public comment? Anybody, any public comment from anybody online? Saying none, we'll move on to our first agenda item, which is the Monaco twenty forty implementation grant program.
She is, she's having connection issues, she also said she'll be here in just a moment.
She's in the office?
She's in the office, yes.
So I'm still pulling up her PowerPoint yet?
Yeah, 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 you should pull up her PowerPoint.
And I didn't know she was going to look for it somewhere else.
If she's here, what's the, I don't understand.
She's trying to print something.
Oh, she's having connection with her, trying to print it. I think she wasn't bringing it out.
They haven't seen issues, they're not getting into our network.
Okay, well, we, we're ready for presentation.
You bring up both Simon and Anne's, I'm not sure which will go first, they're both leading down the hall.
So the Mont the the grant?
Yes.
Sam, is Sam behind you? I don't know, we'll stick to her first. Can you upload the construction reports, presentations? You ready?
Sure. All right. Good on you, presentation.
Morning.
Good morning. Hi, uh, morning, everybody, I am so excited to present to you this year's Monaco twenty forty grant applications and awardees. Um, this is Dulcey's favorite map, I think, uh, so we are, um, we are making our way across the county. Uh, the stars, I think you've seen this before, the stars represent the places that applied this year. Uh, so we are, um, awarding a couple of municipalities that haven't gotten awards previously, but I think this is a good visual to see just how impactful this program has been, we have made grant awards to nearly all of municipalities here. Uh, so again, for those of you that are unfamiliar, the Monaco twenty forty implementation grant program provides funds each year to municipalities to implement projects that, um, that implement the goals of Monaco twenty forty, our, our county comprehensively. Um, we evaluate projects on a score of one to five on a variety of factors, the impact of the project, um, the benefits it will have locally, the longevity of the project, how visible it will be both locally and beyond. And we look at a variety of other factors as well, how, uh, how it relates to county and local plans as well as county assets. We look at diversity, equity and inclusion, both in the, the project itself and the, the process of reaching out to the public. We look at how ready projects are to go, that's, that seems minimal, but it's actually really important in terms of getting these projects done in a timely fashion. And we look at funding as well, the availability of local funds to, to make a match to our funds as well as other grants that might have gone into the projects themselves. Uh, this year, we received twenty-five applications for a total of just over three point seven million in requests. Um, we get an annual, we get annual funding from the county of two point five million and a maximum grant amount of no more than two hundred thousand. This year, we are recommending fifteen projects for funding, uh, this was approved by the commissioners a couple of weeks back. Um, our focus category of walk and bike Mako continues to be popular, we get a lot of applications for trails and sidewalk installations. Uh, so it's nice to see that these, these two plans have, have legs, so to speak. Uh, ten projects were not recommended for funding at this time for a variety of factors, uh, three projects are from municipalities that submitted two application, which they are allowed to do, but we can only fund one from municipalities. Uh, some projects just weren't quite ready to go, uh, and some projects just didn't qualify for grant funds, um, they were projects potentially that were more, uh, maintenance related, and that's something that we just don't pay. Um, so in summary, the between twenty sixteen and now twenty twenty-three, we've gotten a hundred and seventy-six applications total. And we've awarded, including these current grants, a hundred and ten awards for just over fifteen million dollars. So, uh, really quickly, I'm going to run through the, the projects that we are awarding this year, we've got the Abington Master Bicycle Plan for just under eighty thousand dollars, the township is continuing to implement this, this recently uh, written plan with, um, on-road bike lanes and markings and, uh, signage and things of that nature to, to continue to provide an on-road bike network to the municipality. Cheltenham Township, what's that? Oh. Can you not tell? You would know, this is your, this is your, um, god. This is Jenkins Town Road here, um. I can't read this, Rockledge Avenue?
I'll take a look.
Okay. Uh, the, the bike lanes, I think, I think you're going to make an off-world presentation a little bit later in our talk on the comprehensive plan, so you will see that it is a successful initiative. Uh, and getting people out and biking. Uh, back to Cheltenham. Uh, Cheltenham is receiving two hundred thousand dollars towards the installation of a traffic signal at New Second Street and Tucany Creek Parkway. Um, illustrated by another yellow star on the presentation, uh, just to give you a, a sense of how it will play into this, uh, overall trail project. Collegeville is receiving some gap funding, seventy-two thousand dollars to continue with its boat ramp project, uh, at Creekside Park, the ramp is already in. Uh, but the borough faced some delays in finishing this up, including needing more money, but, um, Hurricane Ida and some, uh, local sewer, sewer work derailed a little bit. Green Lane Borough is receiving just about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars toward pedestrian scale lighting along Route twenty-nine in the same area that they received funds for sidewalk installation. I know that we, we went to this part of the borough during our away tour, a couple of last year? Last year, um, so, um, the borough, I think, is really excited about the changes that it's implementing along Route twenty-nine. Uh, and I'm looking forward to seeing this project happen. Jenkins Town is receiving funds, fifty-two thousand dollars toward the Old York Road Traffic Calming and Walkability Plan implementation. I know this is a really busy image, but basically the borough is working to implement this plan because of the feedback it's gotten during its own local planning work, uh, about the speeds along Old York Road, the, the speed limit in Jenkins Town proper is fairly low, but the speeds uh, coming into the borough from Cheltenham and Abington on the other side are higher. And cars travel quickly through here, uh, it's a very pedestrian oriented borough and downtown, so the, the borough is looking to uh, implement these traffic calming measures, uh.
What do they include?
Uh, signage, rumble strips, um, on-road markings, that sort of thing, no real, like, physical changes to the road, just as much warning and flashing lights as possible.
And they've gotten, and they've buy-in?
Yes, they have, uh, this plan was, uh, developed in conjunction with Dandup. Lower Frederick Township is receiving two hundred thousand dollars toward a sidewalk installation on Spring Mount Road, this will connect the township building, which is here on the left with the fire company on the right, it's not a, a long stretch of sidewalk, but it will help keep uh, residents and employees safe as they go between the two facilities. Uh, there is, um, like I say, townhouse community up here that is otherwise somewhat disconnected from this part of the township. Uh, there will also be a, a storm culvert that is repaired at the same time as the sidewalk installation.
And besides connecting the two facilities, is there, does it connect other sidewalk network?
Sidewalk network, no, but I think the ultimate goal is to work toward getting sidewalk access to the trail system, the Perkyomen Trail and, and other local amenities.
Where's that?
It's just up and around me.
Further to the right.
Yeah.
Between the two facilities?
Uh, I assume there's some.
There was the issue, the question that, that they said, one of the things they said is they often have events at one place and parking at the other. And people are moving back and forth between the fire and the fire hall and the municipal building. And we also gave them money, and this is with a lot of these projects, for sidewalks in the, the townhouse community, coming out of the townhouse community, didn't we? Give them some of that also?
That was in a different area, um, but.
Yeah, but it's all in the, in the building, I think, I think a lot of these projects are because of the funding, the amount of funding, they're, they're, and sometimes it's hard to see it when they're sending it into us. They're different pieces that hopefully they will connect eventually to something that we really want them to do, but they're moving forward. Uh, so there was a lot of questions about this.
The street scape on this one is very challenging, that's why the cost is so high for that short stretch.
There's a culvert there and they're, yeah.
But I guess I don't see the connectivity, I don't, I don't think it's connected to facilities, that's why the next few questions.
Uh, it, it also, I mean, I, I was talking, I was talking with a, an upper, a lower Frederick supervisor rather, and she was saying that it really took the, the change in ownership of this house here to, to get them to agree to have the sidewalk installed, so.
There's a longer term, to get to the trail further to the right, there's more work that will need to be done, so this is not.
This is just a small piece of the bigger goal.
Yeah.
Um, quick question, uh, it appears that their sidewalk at the township building, is that correct?
Yes, I believe that's correct.
Well, I mean, I don't think it'd be that much more money, but what if we were to, and, you know, have a crosswalk so that, I don't know how big the neighborhood is to the upper left, but that way you could get to the fire company and get to, um, a safe crossing for the township building, any thoughts on that?
I don't think.
Two, two hundred thousand dollars seems like a lot of money for that stretch of sidewalk, how, how long is that?
Uh, offhand, I don't know how long it is, but it's, it's not just the sidewalk, it's the storm culvert that is below the road, which you can't really see. That is also being repaired at the same time, so that's also a part of.
I don't question the amount of work, and, and it's already baked in, they've already voted on it, right? Right, so it's, and when we look about changing the application at this point, I'm just questioning the connection between the two municipal facilities and what connectivity is to anything else, I mean, how far is it to the trail and how what, what are the, what are the obstacles to making that connection to the trail, is that realistic, or is that just? Uh. A reason to, to create this section that the municipality shouldn't, isn't doing themselves?
I think that the connection to the trail is, is ultimately the goal here, it's just taking small pieces that doesn't mean.
And when we're in the meetings, Stephen, I, I, I don't remember the specifics on this, a lot of times the members of the committee ask questions similar to yours as we're discussing this, and Anne's able to pull up a Google map or something like that and, and show us the extra connections.
That's why I'm asking the question, because I don't know, I don't know the terrain, I don't know the area that well, so I'm asking what that how realistic is that, is it a mile away, is it?
No.
Two hundred feet away, is it?
To the trail. It's a ten, no, that sidewalk is a tenth of a mile long.
No, to the trail.
But to the trail, it's not that, it's not that far, but I don't have a distance to give you.
Okay.
All right, Lower Marion Township is partnering up with the City Avenue Special Services District to um, install the county's first expansion of the Indigo Bike Share Network that's in Philadelphia, so this is, this is what it looks like in Philly and what it could potentially look like in Lower Marion, uh, the hundred and fifty thousand dollars will go toward the installation of the first three, um, bike hubs, I suppose, um, in the township, but to, um, this is the Ballackinwood area, just to give you some context.
And how close is the, the ones in the city, you know?
There's one right across, there's a bridge trail, the Ballackinwood, there's a bridge trail.
These, these orange dots are planned Philadelphia stations, um.
Yeah, there's already.
In the last month or so, shows about red dots.
The one, the, one for this in the north is already in.
Okay. Uh, but the idea is to.
It's not a, it's not a big distance between what Lower Marion is going to do and where the city is left off.
Right, no, not at all, uh, but the idea is to provide more options for commuters and, and others who may be living in the neighborhood.
I didn't know what the, how far, how close it was to the bike shows in the city itself, so.
I mean, there's an oversight committee, oh, I forget exactly what the term is, the committee or the company that's overseeing the implementation and outreach and.
Right, so this is not necessarily Lower Marion's work, but the, the bike, um, forget the name of the bike share. Well, Indigo, Indigo is the program, but there is a, a company that is in charge of this larger.
Yeah, the facilitators, the facilitators watching over and connecting and doing outreach, right?
Uh, Lower Moreland Township is, uh, installing sidewalks along Byberry Road where, as you can see, there is existing sidewalk in these yellow stretches. There are gaps, uh, where the blue stretches are and an existing off-road trail connection here, the idea being that they will provide better off-road trail connections to the people who live in this neighborhood to get them to both Lower Moreland Trails as well as the Pennyback Trail here. Roarsford Borough is working on, um, fixing up the, the Trestle Bridge that's here, does not look like this anymore, but I frankly, it's, it's, um, fenced off, I tried to get close, but I can't, uh, because it is being worked on.
Those fences I did.
Uh, you know, Dulcey's behavior, uh, but the, the funding here will go toward providing pedestrian solar lights along what will be a nicer looking bridge in the near future, uh, this is connected to the work that Roarsford is just wrapping up now on the little parklet and trail portion that connects to their main street.
And it's all solar lighting, there's no electric connections on?
I believe that it is all solar.
Also a good outfit right there, Stephen.
Why, it's not working, no? All right, Springfield Township, um, Springfield Township is one of the ones that submitted two applications, and this was ultimately the one that the township preferred to receive funding for, this is for the Hawes Lane Open Space Acquisition, uh, with funding for two hundred thousand dollars toward the purchase of this open space area here, it is primarily wooded and it will be subdivided off from this larger property in blue, it's adjacent to a senior living facility as well as the township's high school. Uh, and will provide passive recreation area for, um, people who live here in the township, but also I think the, the greater region once it's done. Tomason Township is, uh, pursuing sidewalk and local stormwater improvements along Michael Road and is receiving funding for two hundred thousand dollars toward that project, uh, it will connect, um, the North County High School, which is down here, uh, as well as the, uh, one of the township's pools up here with the the neighborhood here that does not have sidewalks to connect to some of these other areas nearby. Upper Hanover Township is receiving two hundred thousand dollars toward the McCoby Run Neighborhood Park Pickleball Courts. Um, there, there are plans for the installation of six pickleball courts, uh, at this park, which otherwise is, has a, a big opening grant the area at a playground, uh, there seems to be a big demand for pickleball this year, um, a lot of communities are interested in pursuing um, facilities for pickleball, so, uh, we're excited to, to see these projects move forward.
How close are any residents to this?
Uh, close, don't tell Jill, um, here. We've talked about that a lot.
About it a lot, they just closed, they just closed pickleball, pickleball courts down Chestnut Hill because residents.
The noise. Um.
Throw money at something that's going to get closed at some point?
Uh, we, I, I went out here to visit the site at the request of the township because I brought up the noise concerns with them, um, they do have the support of this surrounding community here. Uh, I don't disagree, the pickleball noise is loud. They're modernization that the township owns, they are willing to put in additional buffering through here to try to, uh, muffle some of the noise, but, um.
Is that part of the plan?
That is part of, that's part of the plan, yes, um, and so they fully recognize that the, the flack, flack, flack of the, of pickleball court is going to potentially be annoying to some people. But they, they seem to have done their research and they recognize that it's a concern. Uh, Upper Marion Township, uh, through its ongoing partnership with the King of Prussia Business Improvement District is receiving two hundred thousand dollars toward the First Avenue Linear Park Lighting Project, this is, and I'm actually going out next week to, to look at some of the stuff in person, um. The bid is, has their ongoing road diet project along First Avenue, um, this money as well as last year's, um, last year, year before, um, the, the funding from the Monaco twenty forty grant program will go toward uh, the complete installation of the solar lights that they started in the first phase of this project along this corridor. Upper Potsboro Township is receiving two hundred thousand dollars toward the first phase of the, um, park renovations at Hollenback Park, uh, this is what the, I guess they see the final product being, this first phase is just to install pedestrian pathways through the park, which you can sort of uh, can sort of see here in the yellow, it meanders through the parks, this will be the first phase of improvements here.
Really a chip and punch or force or something that they're putting in? Golf.
Was it crispy though? Alan, this was one that you reviewed more closely, it was this disco ball, right?
That, um, I think that was, yeah, but they're not addressing that, they're only doing the trail.
No, I'm just, that's what it is.
I think it's disco ball.
Yeah, we have big plans there, a lot of fun stuff.
White Marsh Township is, uh, pursuing the installation of a parking lot here on Well Street across from Cedar Grove Park, the two hundred thousand dollars will allow them to provide a safer off-road parking lot for both Cedar Grove Park across the street as well as this passive open space area that has trails running through it on the other side of the street, um, it's an interesting agreement they've come to with the private property owner here at the corner who is allowing the township to use some of his land to install the parking over here, which will be open to the public.
Are there agreements in place?
Uh, are they, they do have a formal agreement to, to move forward with the project, I don't know if it's in.
Talking about the, the private property next to the, at the edge of the parking lot?
Yeah.
That, uh, the, our money and our improvements will not go on to that part, but yes, they do have an agreement in place, but our, we specifically.
Can you do a parking lot without the use of the, without some type of work being done on the, on the private property?
They're going to do it in conjunction, it's just that our money's going to go toward.
Yeah, I understand that, that is the work on the parking lot contingent on using or doing something on the neighboring property.
No, but it, it, it doesn't have.
If they don't have the neighboring property, they could build this, this, this parking lot, not have an issue, there's no.
I think that's correct. Um, but that's, those are the fifteen projects that received funding this year.
Okay, any questions from board members in the room?
No questions, thanks, Anne.
Dulcey?
Um, I think it's interesting that we see, well, we're going to have, uh, discussions momentarily, not necessar- today on the focus of this program, but a lot of these projects are these smaller pieces, once a community understands that, uh, the county will fund good projects strategically located in their community and with good planning, they can do these bits and pieces, and we see a lot of these projects are built on, on, on funding that we gave them in previous round, and I think that's interesting.
Were any of those projects assets, any of those projects part of that? Were they second phases to something?
Uh, Collegeville needed gap funds to finish this boat ramp project, um, that they received on board in.
Green Lane?
And green, well, Green Lane's project is related, but not, but they're holding off on doing the sidewalk work until they are able to do the lighting.
What I'm saying, they weren't, they didn't come to us phased necessarily, Stephen, but one project led to the thought that they could do something else, sometimes they are phased, sometimes they're not phased. Linear Park?
Linear Park is definitely many phases, yes.
Any questions from anybody on, any board members online?
Steve, I just wanted to, uh, thank the staff for pulling all this information together, uh, as part of the review committee, they made our job much easier by, you know, providing the information ahead of time and the background information, uh, for each project. Uh, they did a great job, and it's interesting to see the range of projects that come in from across the county. Uh, and all of the application, the twenty-five applications that were received, and I, I enjoy being part of the process, so thank you for that.
Thanks, John, thanks for taking the time to do that. Jill or Bob?
It's Jill. I just wanted to echo what John said, this is actually one of my favorite committees to be on, and, and I don't know if you know off the top of your head, we have a lot of pickleball applications, do you know how many there were total?
Four. I think that Upper Hanovers might have been the only one we provided funding to, um, Ambler's Pickleball Court is it was, I guess, considered a maintenance project because it's already a pickleball court and they just wanted to more formally resurface it. Uh, Upper Dublin is pursuing pickleball courts at the Twining Valley Park, which, um, we're all for, uh, but we have provided Upper Dublin with a lot of funding so far for the other phases of the park. And Tomason applied for a pickleball court, but ultimately wanted to see the Michael Road project move forward.
Right, so we had five applications and one awarded for pickleball.
Four.
Four, four, uh, applications and one award, I believe, is, is. Thank you.
Any comments from anybody else online in the room?
Steve, this is Jonathan, I joined.
Okay, there you go.
Great, uh, I apologize for joining late, I looked, uh, I echo John's comments, the staff does a great job and, and. And company, and I look forward to um. Our upcoming reevaluation of the program. I'm new to this, so. Uh, it will be interesting to see if we tweak it in any way.
Thanks, John. Thanks for taking the time also.
Sure.
And it's also, who else was on? There was four of you, right?
That was it. Four of us. They'll see Jonathan, John, and Jill.
So thanks to Jill and Dolce, I didn't mention that. Okay. Thanks, Ian. Next up is uh. Housing unit built, units built on residential construction report. Paul on Simon. It's a report is for you.
Something else.
Yeah, that's a lot. Yeah, B D S three's went out yesterday afternoon, I think it's well, does at home or elsewhere? Morning, Simon.
Good morning. Okay, so I'll be going through the housing units built non-residential construction reports for the twenty twenty-two year. Um, but we'll begin with the housing units built report. This connecting. All right, so to provide an overview, uh, there were a total of two thousand seven hundred and seventy units built in the county. Uh, which represents a twenty-five percent increase from twenty twenty-one. Uh, this is significant because twenty twenty-one saw a thirty-five percent decrease of new units from the prior year, twenty twenty. Likely the pandemic had a large impact on those numbers, but this increase could mean a stabilization in the economy. Of these new units, multi-family and single-family attached accounted for nearly seventy-seven, seventy-six percent of all units built. Beyond the numbers, we'll be looking at uh where these units have been built and what it means in terms of meeting the comprehensive plans goals. For land preservation and goes growth management. So this is a chart showing the units built um since twenty twelve to twenty twenty-two over the last ten years. Can see there's some fluctuation, uh, twenty twenty is still our highest number of units built. Um, but twenty-two is. Coming close. I don't know if it'll get, get quite that high again. Um. But yeah, that obviously a large dip in twenty twenty-one numbers. So this breaks it down further.
One question. Do you have an idea how much is this? Is this a net or is it just a gross amount of? Units built? Do you have any understanding of how many units may have been? Decommissioned or?
So this is everything from the, the B O A. So the Board of Assessments gives us data and we sift through to make sure that it's a housing unit. Um, and that this would be.
It's not anything that's been demolished, we don't have.
Yeah, I, I don't think we have statistics on that. Yeah, yeah, so I don't like if. Say there was, you know, two thousand units built, I don't have numbers to say. Five hundred of those were demolished or something like that from a storm.
Something else, I got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
First.
Um, but further on, there is some data about what has been built in a um. A. Like developed land, which gives us some hints as to whether or not that's infill. Um, but not necessarily what was there before.
Mostly, yes, was there.
Yeah, exactly. So this is the number of units broken down into categories of single-family detached, attached, multifamily and mobile homes. Uh, mobile homes are the least found uh year over year. Um, it was actually a. Twenty-seven, point eight percent drop, but that's just such a small number. Um. Most categories um. Were a growth, uh, although. Single-family detached, this number is wrong. Um, the single-family detached from twenty twenty-one was six sixty-four. Uh, so there was one less unit uh this year as compared to last year. Um. I changed that, but I guess it didn't get, make it to this one.
It said, oh, again, the single-family detaches.
Uh, so this number is supposed, it should be six sixty-four and. Sixty-three.
The change is correct.
The percentage is correct.
Yes, yeah.
Just enough.
Twenty-one is incorrect.
Yeah, and the overall unit total is correct. So I saw that uh this morning, I was like, what is that? Um, but so a large change in multifamily and single-family attached. Um. And the overall units. Um, you can see how there's some fluctuation year over year on the graph below. It just shows you. Um, the detached, detached multifamily um in the line chart. And this is the number of units, um, total units um over the municipalities. Um. So for this year, Upper Marion, Upper Dublin and Lansdale saw, saw the most, uh, as well as Conshocken. Um. The darker blue, the more units and white municipalities are just uh those municipalities with no recorded units that were built. These are all the single-family detached units of twenty twenty-two. Um, there is a couple municipalities with more than sixty-one um units built, so Hatfield, Horsham and Lower Pots Grove. Um. The other dark blue is Upper Dublin, Worsh- Worcestershire, Lower Salford. Uh, then we have Limerick, Upper Providence, Plymouth and Cheltenham. Um, and then the others kind of sprinkled in there with a couple here and there. So for we, uh, for single-family detached units, we analyze the median lot size and the median living area. So that would be the actual lot that is being developed in the, the unit that people are living in. Um, there's a lot of fluctuation with median lot size. Um, and then year of year, it's pretty consistent with median living area. Um, so you can see how in the later, the earlier half of the decade, median lot sizes were a lot larger. And uh somewhere around twenty seventeen mark, I believe that is, they drop, they begin again dropping down significantly. Um. I'm not sure exactly what that means to be that we're. Uh, built out, uh, where people are building new homes, there's a lot more homes already. Um. So these are attached units throughout the county. Um, a lot of them in Upper Marion, Upper Providence. Um, Horsham, Cheltenham, Horsham. Multifamily units, there's a lot less of, but uh the numbers are larger, so Conshocken, Norbert, Over Salford, and saw large developments as well as Upper Marion. Upper Dublin and Lansdale.
So those are the areas of just multifamily.
Yes, that, those are just multifamily units. Um, and so in this case, the darker blue is. Yeah, yeah, so there wasn't a ton of multifamily uh developments built this year or twenty twenty-two. Um, just a handful. Um, so in this case, the darker blue is three hundred and one plus units. So this is the growth potential map. Um, this is. Kind of a busy map to, to navigate, but the orange areas are designated growth areas on developed land. The lighter orange or peach is developed, uh, development potential. The green is rural resource area developed. Um, the lighter green is rural resource area undeveloped. And then the darker green is existing preserved open space and uh the slightly darker, left dark green is conservation opportunity area. Um, in our comp plan, we have these areas designated. As places where we want to focus development and places where we want to focus preservation. Um, and we've kind of allotted certain percentages as to what amounts should be developed. Um, and we're pretty close. Um, there were some. I believe in the ru- rural resource area that was a little bit higher than we typically like to see our um. This percentage that we like to keep at is five percent as designated in the, the comp plan. Um, I believe we're a little bit over that. Um, but. The red dots are all housing units built of all types. Um, and you can see how it's kind of spread all over the county, spread all over the types. Um, there are a handful here and there within the rural resource areas, but a majority of them are in the designated growth area. And this next chart will break that down. So total single-family detached units in the growth areas. Um. Median lot size, median living area for those areas. Um. Um, and then age restricted units. Um, there was a good amount of age restricted units built this year. Um. Total was five hundred and forty-eight. A, a majority of those were uh multifamily, but those came in um. Believe one development. Or maybe two developments. Um, and then single-family attached is what we typically see. A large chunk of them being and detached and most of the detached. And attached units were just uh continuations of existing projects. Um, twenty percent of all housing units built this year were age restricted. And this is map showing where those projects are and the number of units.
Have you seen more applications this year? For age restricted housing?
Um.
A couple? I wouldn't, I wouldn't say so.
Uh, in the construct, in the construction report, uh, stuff that's already on its way, there's, there's a couple here and there. But I'm not sure about the proposals.
And age restricted is, is, sorry, I, I know, I would, we've been through this, does that include? Units within life care facilities or are they just all independent?
Yeah. It's both. Um, so there's. Some of them have fifty-five and up, um, I guess restriction. And some of them have um, like assisted living facilities and in, as well as independent care. Um, so. Believe this is the laser. It's hard to see, but that guy in Upper Dublin, the five oh one at Madison Estates is both. It's a assisted living facility. Um, it's a multifamily assisted living facility as well as.
We count quota trends.
We only count the independent living units toward these.
I'm sorry, say that again.
We typically just count the independent living.
So assisted living and nursing, so nursing care units would not be part of this number, correct?
Right.
And the square footage of the assisted living and continuing care will go towards the non-residential institutional.
That's okay, okay.
And I will end up in the age restricted housing. We have all our bases covered.
Yeah, yeah. Um. Great. Any questions?
Other than the ones I just said, no.
Any other questions? Um, all right, in summary. Housing production was up twenty-five percent. Uh, multifamily continued to represent the majority of units built. Uh, with a total of fourteen hundred and sixty-five, both single-family detached and. That's a lie. Single-family detached was slightly down, attached housing production increased from twenty twenty-one, attached multifamily units accounted for nearly seventy-six percent of the total. Both uh single-family detached lot sizes and home sizes have decreased from the prior year, but yearly totals are prone to wide variations. Production of. Age restricted units represented a slightly lower percentage of all homes constructed than the previous year, twenty percent. Um, in twenty twenty-one is twenty-six percent. Majority were multifamily as they have been in. Overall, um, goals from the county comprehensive plan were, were mostly met. I think the variation there is the rural resources were slightly higher than we'd like to see. Um, looking ahead, twenty twenty-three seems to be continuing this precipice of housing production to meet surge need for new units. Um, as the existing homes on the market has began again decrease significantly in the last year. Um, hopefully, things get normal with housing. What is normal? No one knows. And any other questions?
All right, so. I guess through the first. Quarter or so. Are we still, are you still seeing like compared to last year? Do you have, does the commission have a sense of the? If that's changing or is it slowing down?
We were up to a very slow start uh beginning of the year and uh it's overall development activities picked up in the last two months or so. Uh, residential, though, I don't think is driving that so much. So we have certainly seen some, um. Larger developments, you know, occasionally. But I would, I would say we are not on pace to that last year's.
There is um. More in construction, um, a lot more multifamily units in construction. Um. But yeah, I'm not sure about the proposals. I know the beginning of this year was really slow with proposals.
Right, well, what gets completed this year is another question, because I would propose now. I, I, I would still venture to say we're behind this space.
Any other questions on this? Part of the presentation?
I have another.
Steven, this is Jonathan. Any cost information on the new homes?
Uh, I presented that uh a couple months ago.
Yeah.
Um. Property value costs and they're very expensive. Um, median housing prices are at four hundred thousand um across the county and. A single-family detached new home is above eight hundred thousand.
That's.
Yeah, that, that was, as I recall, a couple of months ago, that was for both resales and new, right?
Yes, like the, the median was uh the four hundred thousand number was, was for both resales and new.
Okay. And, and, and the new, did you break out the new?
Yeah, with the eight hundred thousand.
Eight hundred.
Yeah. And that was. Right?
Yeah, I don't remember off the top of my head, uh, attached and multifamily units.
It was all.
Yes.
Yeah.
I can email you the report afterwards.
It's on the website.
Yeah.
I have it in my notes. I was just uh wondering uh about the new stuff, but I'll look back in my notes, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions on this? Want to move on to the other, other part of it?
All right. So it's non-residential. Uh, this is a picture of a new meat processing plant in Hatfield, how exciting. Um.
What's it again?
What?
Where, Hatfield?
Yeah, Hatfield.
Who's is it?
Yeah, I think it's.
And it's down the ball. I, I'm, I'm still called that same.
Yeah, I honestly, uh, in the uh listing, I think it's just called the heat, Hatfield Meat Process.
Right.
So there was a lot of non-residential construction in twenty twenty-two, two million eight hundred and fifty-five thousand three hundred and thirty-eight square feet. Uh, the largest amount constructed since two thousand nine, which is pretty significant. Uh, the industrial sector accounted for forty-two percent of all non-residential construction this past year. Combined institutional and commercial sectors were also strong with around uh just over one million square feet constructed. For institutional and just over four hundred and fifty thousand square feet for commercial. Sixty-nine percent of all new non-residential construction plea- completed in twenty twenty-two was infill. Um, which is on the previously developed land.
The commercial, when you say institutional, commercial, the commercial part of that, does that include office space or is it just?
Yep.
It doesn't include.
Yeah, the institutional is separate from commercial.
No.
Okay.
The, uh, my question is about the commercial, that includes office, retail.
Hmm. Uh.
Well, there's a breakdown on the first sheet.
There's, there's a bit, no, that does not con- include office.
Okay.
So commercial would just be, I'm sorry.
Right, but I just didn't know, something I was talking about includes office.
Commercial, yeah, not, not office. So that would be uh retail and services. As well as like hotels. Yeah, um, and then we will also be looking at uh how this fits in with complan's goals for growth management. Um, similar map. All right, so these, this is the total non-residential construction score footage from two thousand twelve through twenty twenty-two. Um, pretty significant increase uh from last year to this year. Um. It's. It's just kind of a sounding, uh, the number that we've seen that uh twenty twenty-two. Not sure what, what, uh, what did that change? I have heard that there's um large salaries in manufacturing, so maybe that is a, a draw.
I think it's distribution centers.
Well, there's also four schools. Has, has there been another year where there've been that many schools? That's a lot.
Yeah, it is. Yeah, it is.
We've got a couple of years with, um, a lot of schools.
But I can see it having a, you know, a spike effect. When you get that many that just so happen in the same year and there's some big ones on the list, so. There's four in the top ten.
Well, top five or four schools and one, and one processing plant.
Right.
Another distribution center, right, three schools.
Three hundred fifty thousand square foot high school. I mean, that's a big number.
Um, so this is the breakdown in a pie chart form with, uh, some beautiful colors. Uh, showing you institutional, industrial, commercial, office, recreation and municipal. Not a lot in recreation. Uh, there was just one, uh. I think fitness center in a, uh, development that was built. Little bit of office, uh, some municipal with, um. Fire station and police station, I believe. Some commercial, it's real, it's obviously the largest joint. So this is the growth in industrial square footage from last year and to this year. I did the math. I think it's on the report, but it's somewhere around three hundred and fifty percent increase in square footage. It's just crazy. Um, but. That's stuff kind of fluctuates. It's kind of hard to predict year over year, what's going to be built when. So for industrial construction, the largest projects were in Hatfield, Upper Marion and Lower Salford. With Hatfield Meat Processing Plant being the largest, uh, then a target distribution center in Upper Marion. Market Flex at Line Lexington, I believe that's a warehouse and PDC Machines, uh, also a warehouse.
Is, is the Hatfield. Processing Plant, did that take place of another? Or is that in addition to whatever they have?
It's a, an addition. Well, it's a new. It's on their existing property, but it's a new.
Replace another facility like. Lotter facility or is it addition to what?
I think they had an old smoking building before, but this was a much newer, bigger one that they were building. I mean, it's still on that complex with. We grew all the same complex.
Right, I took that picture and it looks like everything's new.
It's, it's all, it's separate from the current, from what they had.
But they may have replaced a smaller one, one bump that was some, uh, cost on the plant on, on the site before, but. For the same functions.
Does anyone have access to near maps right now? Let me get a look at the historic photos.
I do, but I don't have internet.
Uh, institutional construction was also a major jump from twenty twenty-one. That's gotta be the schools. But yeah, it's, it's kind of unprecedented jump from one year to the next.
But this chart really shows that you do have some high peaks and valleys. And again, it's just timing. But this year, having those four schools, it's the highest ever on back through twenty twelve, which I'm not surprised.
Exactly.
Are these new schools because of increase in population or are they just upgrading facilities?
Both, definitely increase.
I, I know for a fact that Colonial Middle School was a tear down and replaced.
And so was the high school, right, Upper Marion.
But when they rebuild, they generally are expanding capacity.
Right, bigger than what they have.
Brand new middle school where they went from two to three, so that was a case of completely.
But are they removing? Are they?
Some of them are. Yeah, we actually, uh, ran into a snafu with the percentages on, um. Conservation lands because of, uh, you know, map, map processing and we, uh, looked. Back at the historic photos and some of them, well, a majority of the schools were just being, uh, rebuilt on the same properties.
I think the only brand new facility is the Black Rock Middle School in Lower. That's a conversation.
But the, the issue. You know, one of the things we talked about in the past, I would say fifteen years are some of these school districts. At some point decommissioning their grade schools especially. And moving, changing around and then having changes in population. And whether they have the ability to reopen those and renovate them appropriately.
Yeah, and that has happened over time. I, I think that's a rare thing now, just with the growth we generally experienced all over, but. In the back, then they had one they closed and there was some controversy with that. Penny Packing and after Horsum, um, that's one that they can close one and are consolidating.
And back in the time when Lower Marion closed so many smaller schools and.
Right, oh yeah, goes back to the, what, seventies or?
Oh, even later than that, but the issue is, you know, rather than building lots of big new schools, sometimes, you know, as, as, um, trends change. The, some of these smaller schools couldn't be repurposed and rather than be, um, sold off.
Chilton Hill nine nine is one of the examples where they took exact same location and they just rebuilt right on the exact same location. Um, just to make it more modern and accommodate some growth. But they didn't decommission that school. They set that property and kids that could walk everywhere.
Yes, and the walkability of the lot is. I mean, it's really interesting because Pottstown is a very good example of a community that repurposed. And renovated their grade schools and now they're all walkable.
So the largest institutional construction, uh, was in Upper Marion, Plymouth and upper Dublin. Upper Marion, uh, School District High School was the, uh, main factor there. Colonial Middle School in Plymouth. Sandy Run Middle School in upper Dublin and then Lower Marion Middle School. Um, is that supposed to be Black Rock? Okay. In Lower Marion. And this is a picture of Sandy Run Middle School. Commercial construction was down from the previous year, uh, and you can see there's massive fluctuations year over year. Uh, but we are trending downward on the last couple of years there. Uh, it's as far as commercial construction goes. Whitpan was the highest with one hundred one thousand four hundred seventy-three square feet, followed by Conch Hocken in Abington. There's a lot of self-storage, uh, secure space, self-storage in Whitpan, Sora West Hotel. I believe that was already constructed, but this is an addition. Uh, extra space storage in Abington and North Penn self-storage in Hatfield.
So if you take self-storage out, we're really low. If you take the sale.
Yes, yes, yeah.
You're really low.
Yeah, people love their self-storage. I feel like I've seen a huge growth in.
There were worse uses. They're low traffic generating.
And I didn't get a better picture than that.
Just, just as an aside, we were involved in that project. Um, we were the design engineer and basically it was an adaptive reuse of a brownfield site. You know, it was. It, it was the site of an old zinc plant. And, uh, we had to go, it was zone R one and R two. We had to get a use variance. We had to deal with the neighbors and I think the end product is really nice.
Did you design that building?
No. No. Do I look that dumb, Steven? Don't answer that.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, let's move on, Simon.
Let's, let's move on.
Do we know that it will never put a self-storage picture in again? Uh, so this is the map of where facilities were by type. Um, kind of busy as well, but the red circles are commercial. Um, the crosses are industrial. The light blue triangles are institutional, the asterisks are municipal, squares are office. Uh, diamonds are recreational, um. And there was no transportation or utility. But yeah, kind of spread throughout. Uh, you can see they have some clustering near, uh, the main routes, arterial highways and whatnot. Um, so this is also difficult to see, but it's just on the chart. Um, so this is where all the non-residential construction was built throughout the county with the growth and preservation map. You can see that growth areas had the highest number of square footage. With, uh, developed land and then developable, developable land, uh, just below that. Um, there was some construction on existing preserved open space.
Yeah, curious.
I don't remember. It was. I should probably.
I'll get back to it then to me.
Yeah. I'll get back to you, but, uh, sixty-nine percent of the total was built on, uh, already developed land. Alright, other non-residential growth factors. This is the number of jobs in Montgomery County, uh, for all industries from two thousand eight through twenty twenty-two. They were dropping for a couple of years, likely due to COVID. Just a global pandemic. Um, but they've been rising since two thousand ten. Um, and they've been rising again the last couple of years to a, a pretty good level.
So this makes sense. If you look at the square feet chart, the twenty-two thousand two oh six matches up with the municipal project in Upper Providence. So I think it was that facility on Black Rock Road, so that would be what was in the existing space. There was a municipal project.
Yes, that makes sense. I think it was a fire station. I'm glad you're here.
We also worked on that project, so.
Uh, other non-residential growth factors, uh, vacancy rates. Uh, vacancy rates have been, um, dropping. Um, for the last four quarters of twenty-two, well, all of twenty twenty-two in office. Um, industrial and retail. Um, they were pretty high the year prior, uh, which is also likely due to the pandemic and people just. Not working in the office or commuting to work. Um, but it's an interesting story.
Also seeing a lot of adaptive reuse of that space between the retail and office, really changing to other uses, so.
Yeah, I know Plymouth is trying to adjust some of their strategies for, uh, their empty malls. So, um, in summary, non-residential square footage growth in twenty twenty-two was higher than twenty twenty-one. And above average compared to previous years. Uh, the industrial sector was the most active with one million two hundred thousand eight hundred eighty-four square feet. Um, significant developments include Hatfield Meat Processing Plant in Hatfield and a target distribution center in Upper Marion. Prominent infill and revitalization projects were the marketplace line Lexington in Hatfield. And that. Seems, don't ignore that. That seems to be a holdover. Overall goals from county comprehensive plan were met with growth preservation plan, uh, numbers. Looking ahead, twenty twenty-three is likely to continue the steady pace of construction, especially with many prominent projects such as the. Cluster Core Five Logistics Centers. Um, those are. Three large warehouse buildings, uh, Shepherd redistribution facility. And numerous other sizable projects due for completion the next year and maybe even Monaco Justice Center. I'm not sure. It seems to have picked up the last couple of months here, but. That would be, it does look like a building. That would be a huge project. Any other questions?
Any questions for board members in the room? Anybody on Jonathan?
I'm fine, thank you, Steven.
I have no questions. Thank you, Simon. Very nice.
I just wanted to point out when it comes to schools, Lower Moreland is actually building a new high school right now and. They're already out of space. The intention was to build that school and close another and they're, they have to keep the other school open. I just want to add that.
They're on the same, they're on the same campus?
So the high school, the new high school is on the same campus at the whole, as the old high school, but they wanted to, um. Convert the old high school to the middle school. Because the middle school is over a hundred years old and they have to keep it open.
Is that why they want a projection?
I can say North, North Penn School District's going through the same thing. They're, they're looking at a forty million dollar. Renovation and expansion project of, of their high school right now.
Great, with the housing numbers, uh, what's next? Feeds into.
Thanks, Simon.
Thank you.
Thank you, Simon.
Parked out fifteen minutes into two hours and see what we can do here. So Monaco twenty fifty background and the trends report, um. So there's gonna be a few. I'm gonna go through these. Four topics and I think talking to Scott, we just want to kind of. There's some clarifications you need during the presentation and, you know, when you, the board members can speak up, but as far as discussion and questions. Well, um, substantive questions, we're trying to hold them until after the four presentations. I think that was more towards, that was directed towards me than anybody, so.
So, and actually just to correct that a little bit, uh, there'll be four issues we'll be going through and we'll have discussion with each issue. After each issue, not all at the end of everything. So think of it as four segments with presentation, discussion. Presentation, discussion, so forth. You don't, you don't have to hold your tongue now.
Questions.
I think Chloe's gonna give us a little more detail on the, on the concept here. Yeah, but I'll, I'll jump right in. I just want to give a quick introduction. Uh, this, this actually is, we've seen. Uh, uh, despite of all the work that led up to it, it's a very exciting time for us. Uh, phase one has been the data collection and background research and trend observation. Uh, part of the comprehensive plan process. Today I feel marks the start of the end of phase one, if that makes sense. Um, and so, uh, we're gonna spend the next three meetings getting through these ten topics with four on tap for today. Just a quick comp plan one oh one, uh, the MPC does require updating of the conference plan every ten years. Our last conference plan was in two thousand fifteen adopted, uh, so we're looking at twenty twenty-five for adopting this one. Uh, phase two will be the visioning exercise, which will begin this fall. And, uh, a couple of notes on that coming up. Our theme on the plan is a comprehensive plan for the changing world, as you see in the tagline there. Uh, we're really focused in looking at the global, uh, impacts, uh, events that we either can control or can't control. Where adaptation is needed and how this is, uh, impacting land use and all, all the other policies that we deal with. Not just the planning commission, but the county as a whole. Uh, we feel that, I feel that a comprehensive plan. Kind of tackles three things, at least for us. It informs county policy. It guides investment on capital projects and infrastructure and offers strategies for all county stakeholders. I think we're fortunate through the last comprehensive plan, our county administration really has used that plan and tried to follow. Its goals and guidelines, uh, in, in the work that it's done since. And we've gotten clear direction that they want this comprehensive plan to also, uh, have that purpose and speak to not just us, but other departments. And county decision-making in, in general. Uh, so I think that's a good place to be and we're, we're fortunate for that. Uh, up to now, just the quick note on the activity, uh, we had focus meetings on all of these topics with a lot of internal participants, other departments within the county. Uh, board members and, uh, a few outsiders, uh, as needed, uh, to really. Explore and, and have good in-depth conversations, uh, that led into the research and, and what you're gonna see today. Uh, we've had a public outreach already, town halls at the beginning of this process, uh, last year. Speaking engagements, uh, by request, uh, been out to a few and a lot of pop-ups where if events going on, we've had a table. And just trying to get out in front of people, share our survey, get feedback and let them know that this process is going on. Uh, online, we have our survey located as well. Uh, within our website, we have a padlet for comments and there are other ways to submit online comments, uh, there. This is only the beginning of public outreach still. Uh, Anne's gonna talk about a little bit in a moment, what we're, uh, gearing up for in the future during the visioning process. And as the future goes, uh, there will be a steering committee. Uh, we hope to launch it this fall. Uh, we're currently working with the administration, uh, and the commissioner's office on, uh, how that's gonna be set up and, uh, invitations that will go out. Uh, it will certainly include, uh, board members, some board members, uh, within that, so, uh, do stay tuned. And the overall timeline, as I said, twenty twenty-five, um, optimistically mid twenty twenty-five, pessimistically by the end of twenty twenty-five. Uh, we'll see how, uh, far we get as we kick off phase two. And also just to impress, I think you'll hear, not just from me. This is the background. There are lots of goals and policies that we're gonna be anxious to discuss and that's gonna be the purpose of the next, uh, you know, two years to get to the final plan. Uh, with the visioning process, this sets the table and helps us identify the issues, but is not intended to offer the solutions or, uh. Mo, for the most part, the direction, although you, you can. ascertain where certain things are heading, uh, through this. Alright, uh, I'm gonna introduce Chloe Mark, who's gonna talk a little more specifically about what you're gonna see today in the concepts.
Hey, we're excited to share with you, uh, what we've been doing so far. Uh, our entire planning staff has been working on this first phase, which is. been about really understanding where we are now. What are the important issues, trends, data points, existing conditions in the county right now so that we can make a good and informed plan for the future? It's been a really interesting process, lots of discussion of planning issues. What's important, what's, what trends are good to understand, what do we need to share with you? And so we're gonna share with you the most important things in the four topics we're doing today. On that, so you'll find it engaging. This, what we're doing now is sort of parallel to this document from two thousand fifteen called Montgomery County Today. In which we tried to go through and do a really comprehensive inventory of everything in the county. We're doing it a little bit differently this time, we're focusing on short documents with key issues in ten important topic areas, rather than a really large compendium that covers everything. Some of what's in Montgomery County today is exactly the same today as it was ten years ago, like the waterways, for example. And we do want to still have that information available and easily accessible to the public, but it doesn't necessarily need to be part of our okay, here's the important existing issues and trends to understand as we set our vision for the future. It's important for us to understand things like that that don't change, but we can put a good online map, a good resource and reference that rather than put every piece of information forward in the planning document. So this, what we're doing, these, these snapshots of these ten topic areas are up to date and really focused on key important salient issues, graphically interesting and supplemented by dynamic online material. We don't have these documents for you now. What we're doing is showing you the results of our internal meetings and discussions about the key topics and issues, and then we'll be developing these documents as we get your input. So what am I talking about, these ten topic areas? So we just tried to cover the important things in categories. For each of these, there was a group of five to ten planners from the office that met regularly, did research, brought things to each other and said, well, what's important, what's been going on, what are the trends, what are the issues? And have picked out the things to share with you today. So you're gonna see the four listed for June in a moment and we'll do more of these in the future. Right, and as Scott said, it's trends, it's key issues, it's important background, it's implications for the future without going as far as setting sort of vision goals, et cetera. We will get to that. Where we're understanding what's now. Okay, so the results, so this is a presentation, there are gonna be these documents, four pages, this is preliminary, we're not sharing this with you in hard copy because we're still working on it, this kind of, this is a transportation one. Whoops. The idea is that there's graphics, there's text, but it's focused on most important things. And that it's structured such that we start with a key topic sentence, we have an important map or, or maybe multiple maps depending on the topic. But then supplemented by online maps and additional information that can give more background and more context. So if someone's looking for like, okay, what are the key issues in transportation, they can look here first to understand what's been happening. Right, I'm gonna just wrap because we need time for the presentation, which are more interesting than everything I'm telling you. So.
Just note those documents, the four page documents will be slated for completion in September, so you may see some of them, if we have any for next July, we'll chat them then, but that's the only.
Okay, so we're gonna have an online place where you have like each of these little boxes, they're called cards where you click on them, they, this is something we already have online, but we're gonna create a new one for the comp plan specifically, that has, you know, there'll be one for transportation, one for people and population, you'll be able to find additional maps and information related to that topic area quickly and easy, so that's still being developed. And the last thing I'm gonna say is that we are looking for your input particularly on whether there's some key piece of information that either doesn't make sense or that you think is missing, like, well, we're talking about trends and something, what about this? This seems really to be an important issue right now, let us know about that and hold your ideas for goals and recommendations for a future phase.
I am just gonna pop up for a second to mention that we do have current plan information on our website that at the website that's posted here, we have a survey that hopefully all of you are taking over and over and over again to to give us your feedback on what our priorities for the future should be. The one thing I wanted to add is that we hope to create an online engagement platform separate from our website that will be a repository for not just the comprehensive plan work, but all of our projects so that people have a landing spot to go to, to see the work that we're doing.
We see and comment, or just see?
All of it, see, comment, really a spot for two-way communication.
There's an RFP out now for a third-party firm to head up this summer. What, significant budget.
Great, that's a change.
Yeah.
That's right, you get questions only periodically. Don't use them all at once.
Yeah, I mean, I've just been saying about the commenting aspect.
We can talk about that.
Yeah. Social media comment, it's not good.
Yeah. So you talk about that. Sure, okay, so as Chloe mentioned, we've got four topic areas to discuss today, and the first is people and population that is going to be presented by Eric. Right, you're out there somewhere.
I'm, I'm out here, I think, if you can hear me.
Live from vacation.
Oh, who wants to be on the beach? This is much, much more fun. Yeah, so we can go to the next slide, just in the trends in, in the demographics. Ocean City, Maryland. Just family vacation. So as, as Chloe mentioned too, I mean, there, there are hundreds, if not thousands, of demographic points that we could be looking at. But we, we picked sort of the, the ones that are changing the most, the ones we thought were the most interesting or the most useful for the comprehensive plan. There will be locations where all the other demographics will be looked at or identified in some of the other resources, but, but these are the ones that the group identified as, as the key. Just real quickly, growth through migration, worker inflow and outflow into the county, the increased ethnic and racial diversity we're seeing. How the median age is changing, the predominance of single-family person households in the, in the county, as well as poverty status. So you can go on to the next slide. So really first, and, and this probably isn't a real surprise if you think about it. But we aren't growing our population because our births are outweighing our deaths. They're really pretty close right now, and in fact, in twenty twenty, the deaths almost became exactly equal with the births primarily, you know, due to COVID and the increased deaths we are seeing unfortunately due to that. But births have only been slightly above deaths in the county, so that's not what driving our growth that you can see from twenty ten to twenty twenty of about, you know, fifty-six thousand people. It's migration, and that would be domestic and international migration, in migration to the county. People moving here from other counties, other states, other countries. And so that's just kind of a key starting point is that, that, that's the importance, that's how we're growing still. Hopefully people wanting to move into Montgomery County because of our great communities, our community amenities and assets, as well as our jobs and industries. Or reasons people want to, to live here and move here. And again, that's, that's the key to this is that, you know, that's how we grow and continue to be strong is, is by adding population. Again, either domestic or international. Next slide. And that's somewhat related then to the, to the worker inflow and outflow. And this is the amount of people that come in to the county every day to work from outside of Montgomery County. Those, that's the inflow, as you can see on this chart. The outflow is those that live in Montgomery County but go to other places outside of the county for their job. That number at the top of the circle near the point of the arrow are those that live and work in Montgomery County. And we could see in the change here from two thousand to two thousand twenty. There's been about a twenty-four percent increase in people coming into the county to work from that two fifty-one to the three oh nine. There's been about an equal percent that leave every day in increase from one seventy-two to two-ten. But sort of the interesting number is that there's fewer people, about nine percent fewer that actually live and work in the county. And we know there's lots of reasons people choose to, to live where they live. But we're just concerned about this in terms of, you know, why are fewer people living and working in Montgomery County? And, you know, again, that could be due to housing prices, people can't afford to live and work here. And that's been decreasing over the years. You know, we're a really great county in terms of our, our economy, it's really diverse, we're continuing to add industries and jobs. And we just wanna be sure that we're, have the availability of housing and at a price point that's gonna allow people to live and work here. One of the implications of this is traffic congestion, we have, you know, three hundred and nine coming in and two hundred and ten coming out, leaving every day. You know, that's a lot of traffic on the roads and I think we would be better served to have more of those areas where people can live and work particularly, hopefully close to their employment, but also just within the county at least itself and reduce some of that traffic flow and congestion and, and of course, the, the implications for sustainability and carbon footprint and all that too, so. Next slide. So this is, we're looking at the increased diversity that we're seeing, this is somewhat related to that, to that growth through migration. You could see the charts there, on the, on the right, two thousand, two thousand and ten, this is showing the second most represented race or ethnicity in a community. White Caucasian is, is the number one in every community, but this shows what the second race is that has the second most represented in each community. And you can somewhat see the trends, just in the dark blue, has been expanding, that's, that's the Asian, non-Hispanic population as the second most represented in those communities. Out west, we're seeing a growth in the Hispanic Latino populations becoming the second most represented. And then the most interesting really is you look at the, the twenty twenty is the two-plus races and the number of people on the twenty twenty census that answered that has greatly increased and is showing up on our, on our map, has the second most represented race in those communities. So the interesting thing here is, you know, again, when you look back to that growth through migration. We added about fifty-six thousand people to the county. But we know in that same ten-year period, the Caucasian population reduced by about two percent. That's about twenty-one thousand people, so really we had to grow seventy-eight thousand you know, to, to meet that fifty-six for the, for the twenty twenty population. And, and all of that was, you know, through the result of, of increased or more, more diverse population coming into the county. Between twenty ten and twenty twenty, the Hispanic population grew fifty-nine percent, Asian up thirty-two, black eighteen percent. And then again, that two races, you know, was up a hundred and fifty percent. Now it's possible some of those Caucasian who answered white in twenty ten could have answered two races or more in twenty twenty. I'm not exactly sure when that question was, was added to the census, I don't think it was twenty twenty, but I know it was, was, it's been a fairly recent addition. So, so that, that's some of the interesting aspects of that, but we are becoming a more diverse county and that's important for the services that we offer. We know that different amenities, you know, based on, on different cultures and backgrounds, you know, are required or requested, so. That's something we have to look at in our communities as well as the way we outreach, obviously needs to reflect the communities that are, that are in our townships and boroughs. Next slide. Just a quick look at the, sort of the increased locational diversity, basically for the, for the Asian population, there's a lot of subcategories. So we just wanted to take a quick look at that, just out of interest to see, you know, sort of what the, the diversity, you know, locationally of those were. You could see in sort of the Upper Providence, Lower Providence area, significant Chinese population as well as Korean. Up in Lansdale and Montgomery, we do see the, the Asian Indian, as well as sort of the Bangladeshi in Lansdale itself. And in the, the Lower Moreland area, we see sort of the whole smattering of, of all of the, the races represented up there. And this is really, again, the breakdown of a community that has over thirteen percent of its population is, is Asian. So there's obviously a much broader dispersion of Asian population throughout the county. We know, you know, Cheltenham, we've been working with them in their comprehensive plan, they have a significant Korean population, but Asian is not thirteen percent of, of Cheltenham's population to, to sort of break down, the, the deeper look at that, but this is all information we have and we can continue to dig deeper into that if we want to. Next slide. Median age, we know we're growing older as a county and we sort of wanted to take a snapshot of, of maybe where we're getting older, and if so, where we might be getting younger. So we looked at the change in median age between two thousand and twenty twenty. You can see sort of where we're, we're growing older is the, the dark red, that's, that's that's the minus, I'm sorry, so the darker green is where we're getting older, so that's in the lower Southford, Warsester, Montgomery communities are the ones that, that, you know, are, are growing older. Growing younger, we have Collegeville, Bridgeport and Concha Hocken are the largest, Collegeville we might have to look at, sometimes your sinus skews that number. But in any way, Bridgeport and, and Concha Hocken seem to be the largest there. The median age for the county is forty-one point three. And that's, that's up from forty in twenty twenty, in twenty ten. And we're also slightly older than the state, the state's about forty and they were actually thirty-nine in, in two thousand. So we are getting older and again, just the implications for that are the services and amenities that we offer in the communities should be reflective of that aging population. Next slide. Another interesting stat that seems to stun people, I guess when I've mentioned it's some of our regional meetings. One in four of every households in Montgomery County is comprised of a single person. Of the three hundred and eighteen thousand households, we have eighty-three thousand of them are comprised of a single person, either male or female, you can see the breakdown there, on the majority of those, sixty percent essentially are female and forty percent are male. And it's also older, as you might imagine, too, forty-seven percent of, of those single-family, single-person households are over sixty-five. And so that's something that we wanna be thinking about in terms of how we offer housing and the diversity of housing in the, you know, in the, in the county. We don't need, you know, four-bedroom three thousand square foot homes, single-family detached everywhere. And so this, this is providing that, the options for everybody and we know that affordability, particularly for those over sixty-five, could be a significant issue.
Does your research give you any information as how you can achieve becoming a single person household?
Take questions at the end, Steve.
This was a relevant question, I didn't wanna pass it on.
Okay.
I'm not sure I understand it, so just, it could be a young millennial professional living alone, it could be an old widowed, you know, sixty-five. Or any, or just people that choose not to marry and they're single in their forties, I mean, there's, that's that's the primary ways.
I think you missed the sarcasm.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It, it doesn't translate over the, over the internet.
Yeah, I'm a little bit of sarcasm today, sorry.
So then the last one here, and this is kind of an interesting one because there wasn't a significant amount of change in poverty status and this is, is for each of these charts are the percentage of people in that demographic living in, in poverty, the hundred percent level or below. And so there really hasn't been a lot of change between two thousand eleven and twenty twenty-one for most of these, which I I guess you can say is a good thing or that we're not doing enough, you know, would be the other way to look at it. There was a spike in several of them in, in twenty sixteen that may or may not be within the, the margin of error for that, for that demographic anyway. But a few of the, the interesting ones are, you know, black and Hispanic are, are decreasing slightly, especially from their, their peak in twenty sixteen. Over sixty-five does seem to be increasing percentage of rate of poverty. And, you know, that's as well as those with disability. So those are just some populations we might wanna to keep an eye on in terms of poverty and, and look at any policies or programs that might be able to provide some assistance. Again, we assume that, that housing costs and we know that people are paying well over thirty percent, which is what they should be paying for housing costs all across the country as well as Montgomery County and, you know, as you get on fixed incomes, which over sixty-five and potentially people with disabilities may have. It becomes a more important issue. So that's something that we, we wanna keep an eye on, but all of these, we'd love to see improved and lowered. But we just wanna make sure that we're, we're keeping an eye on, on the, the populations that are most vulnerable.
Questions? Any questions for Eric?
All right, this is the question part. Any questions for Eric, Nicole?
I do have one, something that came to mind when we were talking about.
I do have one, something that came to mind when we were talking about what I would refer to as the journey to work data. You know, residents living and working versus the inflow and outflow. Does the county have or have access to any data about the county's workforce with regards to the work from home or hybrid work environment? Because that would also, I think, reflect on the change from two thousand to two thousand and ten and moving into the future. So that would be, you know, some data that I think would be valuable as you look at those numbers. I'm just curious if you have any of that in the background. It's not. Super easy data to get right now. So I think the source of that could be an issue, but I just wondered if any thought had been given to that.
Yeah, this is from on the map through the census, and so I I don't believe it factors in the those that might be working from home. I think it it looks at their the address of their place of employment. So it's probably not reflecting that, but I think that is clearly an emerging issue that we need to get a better handle on. To understand, because that is, and we know now, we could see some of the traffic flows, you know, that the the work week is the Tuesday through Thursday, it seems. And if you drive around, you'll know that those days are much, much more congested than Mondays and Fridays. So, yeah, I I agree. That is something we need to to look at more closely and try and get a better handle on. And I don't know if that's something through the the steering committee, if we get some particular expertise or some of the survey. Or sort of public meetings, workshops, we might be able to try and and dig into that a little deeper.
There's a pretty strong chance it's going to come up in the next section.
Yeah. Directly into transportation. You can drop a lane on Mondays.
Anybody online Jonathan?
I'm impressed with the amount of data that Eric presented. I'm thinking that there's a game show here somewhere. Guessing the different percentages of whatever, but thanks a lot.
Jill, anything?
That was just a overall great job. Thanks for joining us from the beach.
No problem.
Thanks. Thanks, Stephen. And, you know, just a a really good presentation with. That's all we get from the planning commission is great presentation and great data and everything else. So kudos to the entire group.
Well, lots lots of good stuff to come too.
Okay. But I I notice in in reading various news tidbits. That a lot of the larger companies are ordering their employees back to work for five days. So I don't know how that's going to work this data this time next year. Any thoughts on that?
Well, I think the the data that data you're seeing here, as far as Nicole had asked and answered. The the information that's coming from the census is based on address of employment, not necessarily where you're actually working.
And it's kind of pre that shift.
So that may not actually change, because even if somebody's working online, their address of employment is based maybe out of the county. I think the question is whether we can extract some. Metrics to calculate the online working. Aspect either now or in the future from some of that information or from some other source. So.
So I want to say to Bob's point, though, there are a lot of companies ordering back. There are also companies where the employees are saying, no, thank you. We like the hybrid. And so the 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 press is reporting more more often than not is that there's a. The the answer is in between, and it's the hybrid situation that's going to be kind of ruled the day at least for them. foreseeable future.
Anything else, Bob?
Nope, that's it.
John?
Thanks, Steve. I'll take increased locational diversity for three hundred. I'm good. I'm good. Thanks, Eric. Yes.
Got it. All right, let's move on to transportation. My questions were asked.
All right. Good morning, board, online and in person. So a lot of the stuff that we just discussed here for the last couple of minutes is going to come up again, as Mr. Popeck was alluding to. Transportation, right? A lot going on. The name of the game here.
You know, gallery.
I answered both.
The name of the game in transportation, more than probably any other sections we'll hear about, is disruption, disruption, disruption. Think about it this way, in fifteen years, we've had in roughly consecutive order, we've had a recession. We've had Uber and Lyft become a thing. We've had bikes and scooters become a thing. We've had SEPTA key. Be created. We've had autonomous vehicle development that was spearheaded a lot here locally by Secretary Richards and PennDOT in the middle of the two thousand and tens. We've had a pandemic, as we all know. We've had electric vehicles now. We're seeing more and more of that. And right on the horizon now is e-bike. So those are eight things in the last fifteen years that we've seen the role of transportation. And it's all causing massive disruption. Of course, the biggest one of all of them, as we just described, was remote work, and you'll see how that filters into all this. All of these things, all nine of these things, there's probably more that I've missed. They've all been upending the traditional transportation order. How people get around, when they get around, their lifestyles and their choices are more than even people have ever had, and it all funnels back into how they get around. So the result is this. We're going to talk about this through a couple of different trends and different modes. But the bottom line basically is this, our transportation outcomes are going in all sorts of different directions, and there's no clear outcome. For where all of this stuff is headed, which sounds extremely postmodern and even nihilistic, but it's the hand that we've been dealt at the moment, and that's what we are here to present to you. So these are the seven things we're going to talk about. The transportation team and myself are going to be divvying these up, and we'll move through these here in the next five to ten minutes. So. We'll start off with commuting patterns, the thing that we were just discussing. So the big trend that's going on here is that remote work is upending our traditional communities. Many people are traveling at odd times, right? So look at this thing. This is this is from Castle Systems. This is the type of stuff that you hear the press, especially the national press report on all the time. So the best metrics we have about who's going into the office and when. Bottom, second from the bottom is the Philadelphia metro. Those of you guys are in the back, you might have a hard time seeing it, but basically. Their highest occupied day of the week is forty-nine point two percent. That's not the. It is the lowest on the list here. This is just pulled from a couple of weeks ago. So Philadelphia metro area, we have the lowest number of people going into our office, worse even than San Francisco, and their problems have been well documented. The lowest occupied day of the week is not the lowest. That's twenty-five percent. And it says there in the box, I'll just read it off for you. That the lowest day on average was Friday. And, you know, nationally speaking, and Wednesday was the highest, and that tracks with other data we've seen. We just talked to SEPTA this week and said, what are you guys seeing on your system? We'll get to SEPTA in a minute. But they're saying that Wednesdays are their highest days, Tuesdays and Thursdays, maybe a couple percent less, pretty close though. Mondays and Fridays, it drops off by as much as ten percent. And frankly, ten percent is a lot of riders on on the SEPTA system. Same time, Center City District did a release report last month. They did a survey of sixty-four companies. They found that. Three days a week, seventy-six percent of those companies workforce, they're coming in, you know, three out of the five days. Only twenty-three percent, less than a quarter, are coming in all five days, and almost ten percent are coming in four days. So those are very variable numbers, but it basically shows you what we just discussed, right? People are not coming back every day of the week, and it varies sometimes which days of the week they come. And right now, it's Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, but at some point a year from now, it could be different. There could be something out there that makes people change a company policies or societal pressures, or who knows what. So everything is changing.
Or collapsed roadway.
Or collapsed roadway. Or collapsed economy. It could be anything, guys. So what this does that scrambles our congestion, right? Some days, the rush hours are worse than they ever used to be. Other days, people are working from home, but they're traveling different times of the day. And so at two P M., your favorite roadway might be congested where it never was before. It is really weird. Today is a Wednesday. I came in on Markley Street in Norristown. Not a car to be found. Last week, Wednesday, it was backed up for like half a mile. So you just never know what's going on. Traffic volumes kind of bear this out a little bit. Surprise, surprise. Pre-pandemic traffic volumes are actually are overall lower than they were pre-recession, but that has not stopped our numbers from continuing to climb. So you see here, this is just a sampling of seven different roadways, different sizes around our county. And in almost all every case here, not every case, because nothing is ever hundred percent. But in most cases, the numbers from two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and sixteen, pre-pandemic, are lower overall than they were before the recession. But if you look at this, these numbers as they they go up, and we'll talk about that a little bit. We're finding that they still are climbing every year, and that's different from the the national trends. National B M T is actually higher today nationwide. Than it was in two thousand and seven. So other regions, they're driving a ton more than we are, but we're still driving, and I think that's the big takeaway here. You know, land use growth is slower. Our region is different than other places. People have more choices here than they do maybe in in parts of the South and the West. But at the end of the day, what we should expect is probably two things. One, slower background growth, and we talk about traffic and what a development is going to do to traffic. You know, there's not a lot of people moving to our communities and huge numbers that would swell those numbers in the background. But also that, you know, when when something does come in, it's probably not going to create doomsday scenarios, because traffic is still less overall on our roads than it was fifteen years ago. So with that, we're going to move on to bicycles and freight, and we're going to hand this over to.
Thanks, Matt. Hello, board members. I'm going to be focusing on other sources of roadway usage. So the county and its municipal municipalities are building bicycle lanes and planning for many different modes. Through the county's street and complete street policy, we promote safe access for all users of a roadway, including cars, trucks, transit, emergency vehicles. Bicycles and pedestrians. We also promote safe pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure through our Walk Monco and Bike Monco plans. There's no doubt that since Bike Walk Monco was published, Montgomery County is now more walkable. This is mainly due to an increased enthusiasm for sidewalks and trails from our municipal partners. Similarly, since the publication of Bike Monco, the county has become more bicycle friendly. According to our records, we have an additional thirty-three linear miles of roadways that have either bicycle lanes or shadows. The graphic on this slide is just a snapshot of a bicycle counts from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty. A Susquehanna Road in Abington from Cumberland Roads to Arbuthza Road has increased. The counts have increased ten times since two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and twenty. Aberford Avenue in Norbert has increased two and a half times. That is also a priority route on Bike Monco. The Calve Street in Norristown linking the Scoogle Trail to and the Chester Valley Trail. To Norristown has increased two thing doubled, and Perkyomen Trail is up ten percent. It should be noted that although bicycle accounts, bicycle ridership has increased. Vehicle crashes involving bicyclists have remained kind of steady since two thousand and eighteen. And this is actually halved since two thousand and eight. So we do need to recognize our partner transportation management agencies, G V F and partnership T M A. And spearheading bicycle safety and awareness throughout the county. There's also been an increase in major warehouse development throughout the county, which has put a spotlight on truck and tractor trailer traffic. Warehouse development tends to be constructed along the northeast extension and in the U S four twenty-two corridors. As Simon noted earlier. Well, e-commerce has accelerated during the pandemic but remains unclear how delivery logistics evolve in in person as in-person shopping becomes viable. As Simon noted earlier, forty-two percent of non-residential construction per square feet in two thousand and twenty-two was industrial development. And this is compared to just twelve, twelve percent in two thousand and twenty-one, although that is. Probably largely due to a real decrease in office construction during that time as well. Okay, that's me done. I'm going to hand it over to Matt, who's going to talk about E D's transit and capital projects.
Thanks, Andrew. One of the clearest trends going into the future that we see for transportation and how it's going to evolve locally is, of course, the use of electric vehicles, especially for replacing gas-powered engines in individuals' cars and trucks. You can see on the screen now a chart showing the adoption of electric vehicles over the past eight years based on number of registrations, both across the state, shown in the gold bars and for our county shown in blue. The two thousand and twenty-two numbers are shown on chart where a full thirteen percent of electric vehicle registrations across Pennsylvania are in Montgomery County. Since we only have six and a half percent of the county's of the population for the rest of the county, that means our adoption rate is twice as high per capita compared to the rest of the state. There are going to be many global automotive industry trends unfolding over the next few years, along with dedicated efforts and funding to try to increase the prevalence of vehicles and publicly accessible charging stations. But since we're already so far ahead in terms of that adoption of vehicles locally, our economy has responded fairly well in providing access to public charging stations. Available at many workplaces, shopping centers, public facilities, and other places where people want to visit. There are still plenty of people like myself, living in places that will not permit or provide overnight charging of cars at home in their own garages. Which is why we here at the county are working to both take advantage of multiple federal funding grants available to supercharge, if you will, the rollout of additional charging stations. As well as try to figure out where the best publicly owned and or county facilities are for future stations to be implemented. We have some cross-section dialogues going on to try to work out that particular puzzle. Next up, we have transit. Public transit is clearly an important part of how people get from to and around Montgomery County. However, just like Matt was talking about earlier with traffic counts and vehicle miles traveled trends. Public transit usage took a large hit during the pandemic and still has not yet fully recovered. The graphic on the screen now is from SEPTA's data portal showing system-wide usage. SEPTA's transit services that cater to center city commuter travel, such as regional rail and metro lines, have suffered more of a drop in ridership. And have not nearly recovered as much as the bus lines. SEPTA's bus routes specifically in Montgomery County have recovered ridership ranging anywhere from thirty-three percent to seventy-eight percent. Of their pre-pandemic figures as of December, which is when the data was most recently available, specifically by line. You see, the entire system is now up to seventy-three percent on buses. We are working with SEPTA, their bus revolution and reimagining regional rail efforts to think about the long-term impacts and how to move into this new transit demand paradigm. Where work from home is a possibility for a sizable portion of the population. And how to turn our transit system and the areas around our transit system into something that makes more sense for the middle of the twenty-first century. It's going to be a challenge as various work-from-home efforts during the day may cause Monday. Work from home and Wednesday traveling in. How will SEPTA develop a weekly pass or a weekly program for parking? How do monthly passes work in this particular system? We quite honestly don't know yet, but we're working with SEPTA as as much as we possibly can to try and make sure everyone is still able to get around our county efficiently. On my last slide, covering capital projects, we have the takeaway headline here. Large-scale transportation expansion is probably over for a large part of Montgomery County. At least in terms of the federally funded addition of new highways and arteries. We've reached a new phase in our built environment, but we're not quite fully built out, and there is still some land being developed for growth. But the overall direction of where our transportation dollars are being spent as a region has dramatically shifted away from the nineteen nineties and even early two thousands. Of trying to promote expansion and moving towards preservation, maintenance, and system operations. Just over the last four transportation improvement programs for the region, the amount of money allocated to capital projects in Montgomery County. Has gone from one point two billion dollars down to nine hundred and thirty million dollars. Part of this is because a large number of our major projects that have been on the books for decades have finally made their way out onto the street for construction. Such as Route two oh two throughout most of central Montgomery County. We just don't have that many larger projects following up behind it, and we are expecting, even with major infrastructure bills being passed by Congress. That the pressures from reductions in gas consumption, liquid fuels payments coming into the. Highway trust fund and simply just fewer gas taxes being collected over time as we shift to electric vehicles. As well as inflation for construction costs and labor and materials. All of these factors are going to make it harder and harder to. Put out more capital projects in the first place. Plus, we're seeing increased instances of dollars needing to be used for disaster recovery efforts, whether it's packages of repairs from PennDOT needed after major flooding events. Or specific accidents that end up severing vital links in the regional highway system. So we, as a transportation group, are now going to need to take a very close look during. Each of the tip-up date processes, as well as through our county and regional long-range plan processes. To make sure that we are clearly identifying the most important projects to take advantage of the ever more scarce federally available dollars. And work to ensure that we are advocating for using the county's available transportation dollars effectively. Including supporting local transportation funding, enabling legislation, and getting the most out of our existing transportation system for all users. I'm going to turn it over to Lorene now to wrap us up.
Morning, everybody. I'm going to talk about safety as it relates to vehicular. Transportation in the county. transportation in the county, okay? Uh, and my numbers when I talk about fatalities, those are fatalities, vehicular, pedestrian, bicycle, those are all of the, the, all types of crashes fatalities. So during the COVID years of twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, fatalities decreased to thirty-six and thirty-nine respectively. But, um, the total crashes were also at an all-time low in the county at that time in twenty twenty of six thousand nine hundred and forty-four, okay? That's the lowest number we have recorded since before tw- two thousand and three. Um, in twenty twenty, though, it, uh, I'm sorry, it, unfortunately, the numbers were just released, uh, for twenty twenty-two. And they're almost an all-time high now of eight thousand one hundred and eleven crashes in twenty twenty-two. Or a total fatality rate of fifty-one. So, um, unfortunately, at the time, we only had the numbers for twenty twenty-one for this heat map, okay? Um, the red circles here, those depict the actual locations of fatalities in the county, of which there were thirty-nine. Um, the highest concentration of accidents is recorded all in the heat map in the red and the blue areas. And the, uh, so in twenty twenty-one, there were a total of seven thousand nine hundred and fifteen crashes. Most of these crashes, though, were concentrated along principal arterials, such as, um, Ridge Pike here, four twenty-two, the Turnpike, the Northeast Extension, and then the six eleven corridor, oh, and seventy-six down here. So, um, despite improvements in vehicular safety standards, road design, bicycle and pedestrian corridors and traffic signals, uh, fatal crashes continue to increase yearly from thirty-eight in twenty fourteen until they peaked in twenty eighteen, uh, with fifty deaths. So, uh, that year also saw the most crashes.
So twenty twenty-two is higher than that?
Yes, yes. Um, but and you'll see a significant difference, though, between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two, and that's that there are less crashes in twenty twenty-two than there were in twenty eighteen, but we have more deaths. So, um, that year, so twenty eighteen saw fifty deaths. Uh, that year also most crashes, the most killed and severe inter-injury. So that's, uh, another statistics that that's used in, in crash data. So it's called K S I, and it stands for killed and severe injury. Um, and those crashes were two hundred and fifty-two in twenty eighteen. We then experienced a marked decrease in fatal crashes, uh, in twenty nineteen, when fatalities dropped to thirty-two just before COVID, okay? So this isn't when traffic crashes decreased or traffic, you know, a commute decreased. It was, uh, for some unknown reason, it decreased to thirty-two just before COVID, even though there was no significant drop in either the total crashes or K S Is. And the year twenty twenty saw a significant decrease in total crashes at six thousand nine hundred and fifty, and fatal crashes rose to thirty-six. Unfortunately, the year twenty twenty-one experienced a market increase in crashes to seven thousand nine hundred and fifteen, but fatalities only rose to thirty-nine. Um, and I hate to say only rose, they, they are faced, have still, you know, it's still a fatality. It appears that based on the increased twenty twenty-two numbers, though, we aren't headed in a positive direction in this county, so, um. Unfortunately, my chart didn't make it because they liked the pretty picture better. But if you're interested in those numbers, I could send my notes out to everybody. So, and unfortunately, that wraps up the transportation portion of our, uh, presentation, and I'm not exactly sure who fell asleep, but.
So question on the transportation, um. Jill, any questions for transportation?
Uh, no questions. Thank you.
Bob? Jonathan?
No questions, a lot more data.
John?
Yeah, I'm good. Thank you.
Just, I, I'm a little confused on the heat map. Um, you were pointing to what you said was the northeast extension, but I think it's three oh nine. Um, but of the, I'm trying to understand if it's more speed or congestion that causes the fatal accidents. Because if, if there, if you don't have a heat map along, um, the, the number of cars that travel like on the northeast extension, you know, but you have a heat map, kind of, I'm, I'm just trying to, can you help me with that?
Um, I, I think it's the densest, the density.
The density, so it's not the speed necessarily, necessarily, it's the number of turns and.
Intersections, I mean, conflict points, where, where those roads are the vehicle, vehicle to pedestrian, like, where those difficult decisions. And I even have numbers on those, I, you know, between twenty fourteen and twenty twenty. The highest, the number of incidents on a roadway in Montgomery County is actually Ridge Pike.
There's always a level dulce at which, you know, the more cars there are, the more chances there are for crashes. And so where volumes are highest, the crashes tend to be highest. But you can even just look at the static map and see some, some things that kind of break that. Four twenty-two, for instance, you know, has a ton of cars, which you don't see stretches of it, other than Russia having lots of accidents. So there are things you can take away from this map in terms of that.
Thank you.
Nicole?
Yeah, that's something that came to mind to me throughout the presentation was just, you know, that focus on safety. I was glad to hear it brought up during the bike discussion. And obviously, you know, this kind of, you know, section at the end that captures it all. It's really important data to dig into. There are certainly some, you know, overarching trends, but, uh, you know, I know you guys are going to get into the weeds a bit as well on the safety side because it is going to inform so much about, you know, what you set in terms of goals and how to achieve those goals, focusing on safety and looking at the data, not only the crashes within Montgomery County, but also the research data on, you know, the implementation methods and, um, you know, the types of projects that the county wants to focus on, making sure that there is that focus on safety along with it. So thanks for, you know, sharing a little bit of that data. I know there's a lot more that goes behind that.
And Nicole, I mean, you make a good point, you know, about safety being a focus. Safety has increasingly focused a lot of our partners. Um, Pendon, we were just in a meeting the other day with Pendon. Fran Handy actually said safety is our number one priority, and the way that only Fran Handy can state that, right? Uh, and it's, it's a reminder that, you know, we didn't just go do this by modes. We weren't looking at trends by modes. We're looking at just trends in transportation. Transportation's got a lot of moving pieces. But something that we need to think about is, step as we transition away from what we've been doing and presenting here the, the summer and getting into recommendations and vision, right, is, is one of the priorities of our plan of our county. Thirty, forty years ago, it might have just been mobility, you know, how do we get people around, look, look, right? But now you're going to have that, and it's going to be probably reduced somewhat by a lot of these other factors, such as freight's impacts, uh, bicycles impact, safety, there's all these other things. We tried to give you guys a window into some of those things that are competing with the traditional mobility for a new vision for the future.
Thank you.
So I think only forward would be interesting to see, we kind of alluded to that, some, some kind of way of correlating the information, for instance, like the mortality issue and the development of bike lanes and shared roadways and whether you're seeing an increase or if bike lanes are introducing another traffic, another vehicle pattern, and does that increase the crash data, does it increase the mortality on that road? Does it actually decrease it by making it safer? Um, I don't know.
Yeah, I do. It's pretty static, actually, since twenty fourteen, before we started the impetus for on-road bicycle facilities, it was fifty-four. And now, yeah, as of twenty twenty-two, it was fifty-seven. So there isn't a dramatic increase in fatalities, but there's also not a decrease that you would expect with the facilities, you know, that we, we add to roadways to protect people.
Well, so those numbers again, I'm sorry.
Twenty fourteen, before we implemented Bike Bonco, fifty-four.
Fifty-four.
Uh, bicycle, bicycle, no, I'm sorry, bicycle-involved crashes.
I would add, though, what I think is not in this presentation, but has shifted over the last ten years, are crashes that are related to distracted driving.
Yes.
And I think that that, that might be a driver of the, the, the statistics that we're talking about.
Oh, but that doesn't.
Doesn't change the question.
See, see, you're getting to the issue of, right, uh, uh, some, some people will say, well, if you're adding more bikes on the road, encouraging them, you're increasing your number of bicycles on the road. And e- even though you're trying to create a safe environment and give them a lane, are they then getting into more crashes, either because they're simply there or because drivers aren't used to them? There could be a host of reasons. That sounds to me like that's what you're getting at, is do we have data that shows that having more bicycles on the road leads to more bicycle crashes?
Well, I'm not, I'm not asking if you have data. I'm assuming there's some way of extrapolating some of that data and looking at it. I, it, it doesn't necessarily correlate with what you're seeing here, because a lot of these roads that you're talking about, especially where the heat map gets then, the heat map gets more to the purple, are highways or limited access roadways as opposed to a, a roadway that would actually have bike traffic on it. But going back to what was talked about on, you know, Susquehanna, Susquehanna has had, you know, bike lanes put on it. Is there a greater number of bicycle-involved incidents on Susquehanna than there were pre-bike lanes? And, I mean, I mean, it's not as pretty as now, I'm just saying, that's some information that would be worthwhile because there's always this argument, especially on the eastern part of the county, where infrastructure and right-of-ways are very difficult. Um, it's one thing to put up a bike lane line and give them a designated, but you're really still on the same road. And getting to Anne's point about distracted drivers, that line is not going to stop somebody who's on their phone and figuring into a bike lane and hitting somebody on a bike and shit. But there is a question is, you know, do we get into more protected? Do we try to advocate for more protected bike lanes where we can? Once again, more difficult than used to part of the county, where right-of-ways and development have closed in on roadways, and it's more difficult to find that piece of land. But, you know, closer to the point of where we, what they did on two oh two up in North Wales and some of those other.
There is a way to extrapolate that data. It takes a deep dive into the actual accident incident site, then, you know, what type of incident, yada, yada. I mean, you can do it by bicycle.
Yeah.
Corridor, but it's, it's a deep dive.
Yeah, i- it's a good question to ask. And, and our experience, just like any type of traffic safety question, that tends to be focused on the facility itself and its unique characteristics. So what we would want to do to address your concern, if we're to walk after this meeting, is do stuff. You know, we, we draw up the, we look at the numbers along the major routes where we've added bicycle lanes, let's say, in the last five, six years, and see how many crashes show up and where they show up. Rarely is it, is it an indictment of the mode itself. It's usually more indictment of whatever, uh, physical and man-made characteristics you have in that area. So for instance, you know, pick Susquehanna and Cumberland, right, because we mentioned that, right? You know, if, if we saw some crashes there, it probably means that you have bad sightlines or you don't have good signage, or maybe to your point, you just, you don't have enough room. But that doesn't necessarily mean that having bicyclists on a roadway is, is increasing bicycle unsafety, right? So that's the type of, my point is, that's the type of deep dive we'd have to do and look at everything individually before we'd be able to see if there's any large-scale situations. Usually there isn't, but there might be, but that's kind of how you attack that question.
Two quick points from a countywide perspective. One, bicycle crashes in the two thousands decade numbered into the hundreds most years. It fell off precipitously during the Great Recession and has not budged out of the fifty to seventy range for several years. Two, from a countywide perspective, even though we're proud of the fact that we're now up to nearly fifty miles of bicycle facilities, that simply is just a drop in the bucket based on the number of roadways around the rest of the county.
And I think, I think that the, the bike community, bike commuting, community is going to increase, especially the wide, widely available now traction to e-bikes. I mean, I'm using my, I'm using my electric bike twice a week to go to work. Um, and, you know, it's a short ride, but still, you know, I see other people biking on traditional bikes and also e-bikes through, you know, in my travels, not, not quarter to six in the morning. But on my way home, I do see them. Um, so, but, you know, I think you're going to see that more and more. And then, then there's a whole other question is, you know, the, the integration of e-bikes with traditional bike lanes and bike facilities. Because there is a sense of uncomfortableness of having somebody fly by at eighteen, twenty miles an hour on a on, on this traditional, whatever they call it, category two e-bike or some kind of, forget the number.
See, you're one of those disruptors we were talking about.
Does that shock anybody? Is there a video of that?
Actually, you get up out early, Jill, but if you get up out early.
I do. I did.
Uh, Steve, just so you know, Ellen's in the back. She had raised her hand if, uh, you know what she's going to call it.
Oh, I, I just wanted to add, uh, just another aspect that didn't get caught up in this conversation right here. But it's a physical aspect that, at least in the national, and I don't know if we have a way to determine this at the county, is the size and weight of vehicles as another, beyond the road design, as another physical characteristic that is.
That information's out there also.
And so that's a big thing of, in the national conversation. I don't know if it applies county by.
It does.
But it's that.
I was only given two minutes to give these brief data.
That's something that.
I could go on for an hour.
Something that county itself really doesn't have that much ability to control. What the size of the. Right.
It's a trend. It's an important part of the puzzle, but policy-wise, it's, it's this federal, mostly the federal level.
It would be the advantage of four or five-dollar gallon gas.
Or diesel.
Well, I'm just saying, higher the gas prices, the smaller vehicles are going to sit. So, I mean, you go to Europe and it's all small vehicles.
Yeah.
So, you see the pickup truck is like, you know, you, you take nothing, it's all picked up.
So, thank you, board.
Thanks, thank you. All right, um, preservation and recreation.
I don't know. I'm great. How are you?
Good.
Thanks. Good morning. So I'm going to be covering, uh, what we're calling this section Preservation and Recreation. It's covering a number of topics which are listed here. It includes the primary trail network and open space to areas that our section focuses on. But we're also going to be talking about county parks, historic resources, and preserve farmland. So these are the five articles or areas of interest that I'll be discussing today. So we're going to start with trails. Um, as you know, the, the primary trail network, which is the map that you see in the center of this slide, is an integral component of the county's existing and planned infrastructure, and it's seen strong growth over the past ten years. Right now, about ninety-nine point three two miles of the primary trail network have been constructed by the county uh, and or local partners. So we're just below the one hundred miles that I think everybody um, has been looking for over the past several years. You can see on this slide, um, a number of things. You can see, uh, the, uh, five trails that, uh, were added to the primary trail network over the past ten years since twenty fifteen. Um, I'm not going to go into the details of those, but you can see the orange areas that are in the enlarged circles represent trail segments that were added over the last, uh, eight years or so. The, uh, circles where you see a red star, namely the one on the left and the two on the right, indicate where key gaps in the trail network were closed. So, as you know, trails are used for both recreation, um, and transportation. And when you look at trails from a transportation standpoint, um, it's our belief that, uh, continued and increased use of our trails as a transportation resource, meaning a means for people to get to work and a means for people to get to key destinations, whether it's shopping centers or tourism sites, are driven by three things. Uh, the number of trail gaps that we can close, we think that that will help, uh, uh, create a primary trail network that is more accessible and usable as a transportation resource. Um, obviously, miles that you're adding to the network are going to make it, um, a more viable resource for people to use for transportation. And then, obviously, any local connections that you can make off of the primary trail network to get you off into the individual communities is going to be a really important factor, um, as well when you look at the trail network, uh, and its use as a means of getting around the county. Looking at some key statistics about the trail network, over the past ten years, those five trail projects that I pointed out on the Sculca River Trail, the Penny Pack Trail, Chester Valley Trail, equates to about thirteen point four miles of trail added to the overall network. Uh, those three gaps were filled, uh, namely the Sculca River Trail in the western part of the county, the Chester Valley Trail in Bridgeport, Norristown, and Upper. in Bridgeport North Town and Upper Marion Township, and the Penny Pack Trail up in the northeastern portion of the county. Um, right now, about one hundred local connection, trail, uh, connections to local trails exist off of the primary trail network. And via those one hundred connections, you can access approximately ninety-four miles of local trails from the primary trail network. Like I said before, if, the more access we can provide off of these arteries, the primary trail network into those local trails, the better. So, the county's role is to build out the primary trail network and to help local communities build out their local trails. And then by doing that and partnering, you create this really robust trail network across the county as a whole. I guess the other thing I would say, just staying on trails for one second, um, we understand the importance of improving the diversity of our trail users, um, and improving access to the trail system overall and making different communities aware of our trail network. Those are all really important things. Those were, um, the, the subject of the Trail Diversity Access and Awareness Plan that we did back in twenty twenty. Um, and so we're looking at places where we can improve that access and diversity on our trails. And I also think it's important just to note the economic benefit of our trail system across the county. Um, these, uh, aren't just places where people go, they actually generate revenue for the communities that they travel. Um, and so they're really important from that aspect as well. Okay, jumping into the, the world of county parks, um, this is a map of, uh, county parks, uh, across the county. Um, they're shown in green, and when I, when I'm using the term county parks, um, and this includes historic sites, these are properties that the county manages, meaning they actively maintain them, they steward them, and they're publicly accessible. There are county-owned parcels where the county's not doing anything with them, they're just sitting there. They might just be open space, no one knows that the county owes, owns them and people aren't using them. These are the areas that are actively managed and actively and publicly accessible. Um, this comprises about, it's, well, it's fifteen parks and historic sites, there are five historic sites. They comprise about fifty-nine hundred acres in total. Green Lane Park is the biggest county park, as you probably know, it's about three thousand acres, and it's also the most popular park, uh, in the county. And, uh, this is another piece of information that I think everybody's pretty aware of, that the pandemic really exposed the demand by the public to use these outdoor facilities. That includes our trails as well, but there was a surge in demand and use of all of these county assets, parks, his, uh, parks and trails, um, during the pandemic. Historous, historic sites, a little bit less so, because a lot, a lot of those are indoor programming. Because of the pandemic, people were hesitant to go inside, uh, into enclosed spaces, but the trails and outside, uh, resources really saw a surge in use. In terms of numbers, um, you can see that, uh, between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two, park attendance, and this includes all of the county parks I just showed on that prior slide, plus the Schuylkill River Trail, Penny Pack Trail, and Perkyomen Trail. Um, usage, uh, and attendance increased sixty-four percent, uh, in those five years. That's about one point three million people. Um, that's a big number, uh, in growth. Um, we need to dig a little bit further into why that happened. Obviously, the pandemic had some, uh, some influence on it, but you can see even in the years prior to the pandemic, there was an increase in their popularity. It probably has to do with awareness, uh, and the build-out of the system. Um, and just sort of that momentum that gets gained when people start to use them, um, but this is a really telling statistic in our mind. Um, but obviously, the park system as a whole provides enormous recreational value, economic value, again, uh, as proven out in the return on environment study that we did last year, as well as environmental benefits, um, stormwater management, habitat, um, and so on. And, um, uh, and those are benefits that are reaped by, uh, the people who live here, as well as the people who, um, work here and visit here, uh, as well. Okay, open space. So, no surprise, open space is a core value to county residents. It's been proven out in survey, um, after survey, and it's also shown in, um, just in anecdotal conversations with people, especially during the return on environment study. We saw that this is a big reason why people choose to live and work in Montgomery County. The county has a strong record of open space preservation, especially over the last thirty years, driven by the understanding that open space provides, uh, those really enormous benefits that I've been talking about in terms of trails and county parks, economic, recreational, and of course, environmental. This map here, uh, shows that, um, uh, all of the permanently protected open space across the county. Um, as you can see in the pie chart on the right, ownership, um, of the permanently preserved, uh, open space across Montgomery County spans all levels of government, from municipal, the county, to state, to federal. Um, it includes nonprofits, uh, like land trusts. Um, and it also includes land that is, uh, owned in fee, as well as land that is under easement. And that means, uh, easement, conservation easements, as well as agricultural easements. So, remember when you're looking at this map and you can see it in the bottom of the pie chart, this includes all of the preserved, um, agricultural land, uh, in the county that, um, Anne's group, uh, focuses their, a lot of their efforts on. So, um, in terms of statistics for open space, about forty-two thousand two hundred acres of open space, again, including preserved farmland, were permanently preserved countywide as of twenty fifteen. As of twenty twenty-two, about an additional twenty-eight hundred acres of open space, again, including preserved farmland, were permanently preserved. So, going forward, you know, obviously, development pressures, it's gonna continue to be an enormous factor when it comes to preserving open space in all its different forms. It's always gonna be the greatest threat. I think one other big question that we need to ask ourselves in terms of the comprehensive plan is how do we define open space? You know, as we start to look at the eastern portions of the county and where opportunities might lie to preserve, um, land, that's gonna look very different than the land we preserve in the western part of the county. So I think we need to get, um, our arms around and articulate, uh, uh, an answer to the question of what is open space so that we can better address it countywide rather than just in one half of the county. Okay, historic preservation, this is not an area that I deal with much, but it was really interesting, uh, to learn about this. Um, uh, people in our groups did some really nice research into this, and I think it was pretty, pretty telling. Um, and, uh, again, historic resources in the county, um, they really contribute to the culture and heritage uh, for people who live here and work here. Um, preservation of historic resources and structures and their adaptive reuse respects the history and character of our communities. It balances new development. Um, I think that, that's clear when you see development pro- proposals that include the preservation or adaptive reuse of a historic uh, component, really, that really enhances the, the proposal for the new development. Um, in terms of the historic preservation landscape, um, there are contributions at all levels. Local, county, state, and federal. But for the most part, municipalities are really the core to historic preservation. Um, in the county, um, they're responsible for, generally for developing historic resource inventories. Um, they're largely responsible for, um, adopting, um, ordinances related to historic preservation. So when you sort of, uh, get on the ground and look at, um, the preservation of historic resources across Montgomery County, that local, uh, effort is really what's, what's driving it. Um, and so to that point, um, just looking at some of the statistics on this slide, thirty-three of our municipalities here, uh, in Montgomery County, out of our sixty-two, have ordinances related to historic preservation. Of those, eleven were either improved or newly adopted, um, since twenty fifteen or twenty fourteen, I should say. And across the county, there are nineteen, uh, historic boards or commissions that, um, provide, uh, advice to their elected officials. Um, and that's, you know, that's about a third of the municipalities, um, in Montgomery County. Could the number be higher? Probably, but, um, that's something that, you know, I think when we look forward for the comp plan that we're gonna wanna look at, how can the county support municipalities and their historic preservation efforts? Is it funding, uh, model ordinances, expertise? Um, those are some of the things that we'll think about when we move forward with the comprehensive plan. And then lastly, preserved farmland. This is a, uh, map of all of the preserved, uh, farmland in Montgomery County. The vast, vast majority of this is preserved, uh, by the county via the state farmland preservation program. There are a handful of, uh, farms that were preserved at the municipal level, but the, I don't have the exact number, but the vast, vast majority, high nineties, are through the statewide program. Um, again, like historic preservation and resources and the other issues, trails, open space. Um, you know, the county and the residents and the workers and the visitors here understand the importance of the history of agriculture in Montgomery County, um, across the region. Um, we understand how it contributes to our culture, we understand how it contributes to, um, our environment as an open space resource. And because of that, going forward, we're going to continue what have been sustained and proactive efforts to permanently protect farmland, um, across Montgomery County. Right now, there are five hundred and sixty-five farms in Montgomery County. They cover approximately thirty-one thousand acres, and the average farm size is fifty-five acres. But like anything else, um, there are challenges that face our agricultural community and by extension, our efforts to preserve farms. Um, one of them is the aging of, uh, the, uh, farm, the farmers in the county. Um, ninety-eight percent of the farms in Montgomery County are family farms. Um, and this is an interesting statistic, that ninety-two percent of our county's producers are older than thirty-five years, uh, of age, and thirty percent are older than sixty-five. So you take those statistics where the, the farmer population is aging out, and you combine that with the fact that the succeeding generations, their children and following generations are less interested in farming, they have more opportunities to pursue other careers, they're receiving higher levels of education. You can see what the equation is gonna do, is that as the older farmers age out, the younger generations are looking elsewhere. So this is a really important factor that needs to be, uh, kept in mind. And I know, um, our, uh, farmland preservation team is well aware of this, um, but that's something that's, uh, certainly on the front burner. Um, the other issue is financial viability of farming, uh, in general, and that is a significant challenge. Farming is super expensive. The equipment is really expensive, supplies, fertilizer, you name it. Um, not only is it expensive, but it's gotten more expensive over the last several years. And in fact, more farms in Montgomery County, uh, report net losses than they do, uh, net gains. So as a result of that, one of the trends that we've been seeing is that, um, farms, uh, are exploring alternative revenue streams to supplement their more standard, uh, crop production, uh, revenues. An example of that is, um, agritourism, which you've probably heard the term. I've also heard it described as agro-tainment. I think that's the less popular term, but, but, um, same sort of idea where you're linking agricultural production, you know, the standard practices, with bringing people on farms, um, and giving them, um, opportunities to, uh, uh, participate in farming, um, activities, hayrides, um, pumpkin picking. Uh, it's also used as an opportunity to educate people. But this is a means of generating some additional revenue for farms. It's not the only solution, but I think what it speaks to is that there's a concerted effort in the agricultural community to explore other ways to generate revenue, because they realize they can't subsist on crop production revenues alone. Um, and so I think that is going to, uh, continue to be a trend. And it may be good in terms of that challenge that the farming community is facing in terms of, um, younger generations being less interested in farming. If you can make farming more of an entrepreneurial venture, that might engage younger people and look at it more as a business and challenge that way, and that might keep people, uh, this is speculation for sure, but that may keep people more in the fold in, in farming. So just a couple of slides to show you some trends over the last, uh, ten years. Um, the total acres of preserved farmland in the county has increased fifteen percent over the last ten years. That equates to roughly, uh, fifteen, um, hundred acres. Right now, it's at ten thousand five hundred acres, or at least through the end of twenty twenty-two. As far as the number of preserved farms, it's, uh, increased about twenty percent. Um, going from a hundred and fifty-four in twenty fifteen up to a hundred and eighty-five, uh, at the end of, uh, twenty twenty-two. So, just to wrap up the farmland preservation piece, farm is open space, and I think with concerted effort and thoughtfulness, some of the challenges facing the farming, farming community can be, uh, addressed. And so in closing, um, just some, a few thoughts about, uh, where we're gonna go looking forward. I think the popularity and awareness of our open spaces and trails, um, is just gonna continue to grow. Um, these assets are core to the infrastructure of the county. Perhaps not the level of roads and the power grid, but I think people who live here, um, are starting to think of them more as foundational and fundamental to the fabric of the county. And I think that's a message that would be, uh, potentially good for us to communicate and sort of frame it that way. Um, all of these facilities should be accessible and accommodating to everyone. And so we wanna be thoughtful about that going forward. And, um, lastly, some, just to reiterate something that I said before, and this really applies to all of the articles that I addressed, development pressures are gonna continue to be a challenge, and we just need to keep that on our mind as we continue to pursue preservation and, and recreational opportunities.
Any questions for Bill?
None for me. Thanks, Bill.
It's a very, very good presentation. Thank you, Bill. I, I just have one. It's not, it's not a question, but when I see the, uh, maps of open space, this time it hit me more than ever, and it's not for conversation today, is Evansburg.
Yeah.
That big, big piece in the middle of the county that I know some people use for trails and stuff. But is there another vision for Evansburg? Not for this time.
Yeah, great question.
Um, Jill?
No questions, thank you.
Bob? Jonathan?
Um, I, I agree wholeheartedly with the closing comments that, um, uh, open space and the trails, um, are an important fabric of the county. Uh, I, I think that's why a lot of people move here and stay here, um, because of that. So, anything that we can do to enhance that, I'm all for.
So I just had two comments. One was, um, you had talked about the trails, and I think in the next, in the comprehensive plan revision, there should, we should somehow figure out how to make a greater emphasis on what you had talked about, which is, is, is promoting the trails, not just for recreation, but for commuting. And how, how best to, um, entice municipalities and business organizations or whatever, to connect to those central trails that the county is producing and, and get away from that normal stigma of a trail just being someplace for you to go exercise or get into nature, but actually find a way to use it more productively. Yes, that is, those are productive things, just in a way that reduces our foot, our carbon footprint, um, and uses them in a better way. So, um, and then the attendance graph that you said, you showed, I didn't know if you had any sense of whether that graph mirrors the, uh, investment in trails or parks, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, in outdoor county facilities. Um, you showed that there was a steady increase in the use of, in, in the, uh, use of, and the attendance of outdoor county facilities. I didn't know if there was a correlating graph line with the investment in those.
Yeah, I, I don't have.
Change of attitude.
So again, speculation here, but why not? Um, so, uh, I, I think it's probably part awareness. I think it's also, um, I don't know how skewed those numbers are, or what part of it the trails are playing. Um, because that's where a lot of the investment has gone. I would say, and I'd have to go back and look at this, but there hasn't been a lot of addition to county parks over the last ten years. So from an acre standpoint, um, that number has not grown significantly. Um, so because that attendance data includes those three main trails that are large, you know, that are largely built in the county, I'm guessing that those, those, that data has a significant part in that increase.
Connectivity to other.
Yeah.
Facilities.
Right, and just the fact that those are built and being used and becoming vastly more popular.
When I say investment, I'm not talking about like taking on new space and talking about what you talked about, which is creating, um, closing up gaps in trail areas or, you know, creating more active recreational spaces within parks that would attract people to them other than. creating more active recreational spaces within parks that would attract people to them other than what Dulce talked about, like Evansburg.
And also programming of those areas to attract.
Right. So I would know that that, that, those all fall into that category of investment
Right.
in in the outdoor facilities. So questions?
Yeah, it's a good question. Well, I want you to say what you're gonna say, but one thing I'm gonna say is that I know the programming at our county facilities has really risen. And okay, and and that has been very proactive and I know that's resulted in increased visitation at those places, environmental, historic and otherwise.
But I think adding to, going back to my original point, one of the goals of the comprehensive plan should be adding to the marketing of our trails as not just for recreation, but for community.
Yeah.
And I think the movement between the twenty forty plan and the twenty fifty plan allows you to sell that. I mean, the connections that have been made in the last fifteen years. You know, it it directly influences the ability to realistically promote that to people and demonstrate that it can be used that way. And the more, obviously, there's still connections to be made. But the work that's been done over the past ten years plus makes it much more possible, I think, in this cop plan than it probably would have been in the previous.
Yes. Yeah.
Your photograph right there was a marketing, a marketing message when we were
You want to be in this car or do you want to be?
When we were, when we were trying to build the Perkyomen Trail, the thought was, you know, do you want to walk from car to car on top of them or would you like to take a bike on this trail we want to build?
Yeah, I think that's a Stokes photo. My time's up. Thanks.
Okay, I know we talk about housing a lot.
What did you actually add?
All the stuff that was said earlier. Yeah, no, bonus appearance, Ben A.
Simon's up there or what else is for that?
And I'll have something different for us. We have to talk about housing. Housing is a big part of our, of our work here as well as our comprehensive planning work. I'm going to talk about all of these things in a brief, concise amount of time. So we'll start with existing housing units. We already have a lot of housing units here. As of the twenty twenty census, we had three hundred forty-four thousand plus units. That sort of gets at the question of what gets demolished and what gets built because the the census is that they're counting. But our existing housing stock, even with the huge numbers of multifamily units that had been constructed over the last ten years, our existing housing stock is still primarily single-family detached homes. Multifamily units have definitely crept up a little bit in in percentage. As of the twenty-ten census, single-family detached homes were fifty-five point seven percent of our housing stock. So that number has gone down a little bit. I I think we're going to continue to see more attached and multifamily construction in our already developed areas, as Simon alluded to earlier. Because this is what we're seeing proposed to be built here. Still, detached homes are being proposed for construction and I think we'll continue to see that because people want to live in detached homes. But multifamily and attached homes are are still the bulk of what's being proposed and they are the the bulk of what's being built, multifamily units in particular. Even though the, the, you know, map that we showed earlier showed them in very few places, they're, they're large in number. In terms of what we expect to see in the future, I will, I will caution that these numbers are just a best guess of what we might see built here in the future. I use the methodology that we used in our twenty forty plan to look at what we might see coming down the road. I used DVR PCs, twenty fifty population projections and adjusted them slightly because their population projections were done prior to the release of the twenty twenty census. And their projections for twenty twenties population here were below the count for twenty twenty. So I adjusted everything upward to reflect that change. But so looking at what we expect to see here in the county in terms of residents in twenty twenty or twenty fifty, rather, and then subtracting out a group quarters population and thinking about average household sizes and I could talk to you all day about this, but the the end result of the math, and again, this is just an educated guess, that we'll need upwards of thirty-three thousand new housing units by twenty fifty. And that's, that seems like a really big number, right? But that's twenty-seven years away from now. Scott and I will still be plugging away here at the planning commission, I'm sure. But twenty, but thirty-three thousand units Thirty-three thousand plus units over twenty-seven years is only one thousand two hundred thirty-seven units per year. And we're typically well above that in terms of house construction. Now, that being said, there's a lot of unknown in this math. Scott and I were talking about this yesterday. If we continue to see a lot of multifamily housing units being built, those tend to have smaller household sizes in them. I think the average household size I used in these calculations was two point four nine people per house. We're not going to see that in a one bedroom. Well, we might in a one bedroom apartment, but not for the most part. More multifamily units with smaller household sizes means those people need to live somewhere else. So there's a lot that is in flux here, but we're going to continue to grow. Eric already told you that. So all of those people are going to need to live somewhere. Housing affordability, it continues to be a challenge here in county for for people of of all stripes. Our household, our housing prices continue to go up. Simon already talked about that a little bit. They're going to, they continue to go up. They dropped a little bit earlier in this century around two thousand eight. But they continue to climb. I don't need to to dwell on this because I think you already know. However, the the numbers that also are stubborn are the percentage of household income that people pay towards their housing costs. I was trying to dig into this a little bit more. Our cost-burdened households, the orange stripe is the number of rental or renter households that pay more than thirty percent of their income towards housing. And and certainly some people do this by choice, but I'm guessing that a lot of people don't. They they pay for the housing that they have. In twenty twenty, we had ninety-six thousand or so occupied rental units. They accounted for nearly thirty percent of all of our occupied housing units. And the number is going, the percentage, I should say, is going up over the years. In twenty-ten, renter units were only twenty-five point seven percent of all of our occupied units. So we're getting more, more renter households, fewer owner households, ownership households, if that makes sense. But the the numbers of renters that are paying more than thirty percent of their income towards housing continues to be high. Over forty percent in this case. So as I was saying, homeownership rates are are going down. And what I wanted to point out here is the racial disparity in homeownership rates. This chart on the left shows the percent of occupied housing units. And and the racial breakdown as to who lives in in these housing units. So these are, this is both owned units and rented units. But when I look at just owner occupied housing units, the percentage of white households that live in a, in a home that they own goes up to eighty-three point three percent versus the seventy-eight point one percent. So there are fewer white people renting their home versus owning their home. And and the numbers flip for people who are black or African American or who are Asian or who are two or more races. They tend to have their home ownership numbers drop. Homelessness is lately a topic that's been in the headlines here. But it is important to note that our our numbers went up, our homelessness numbers went up. I'm no good but this laser pointer. Went up significantly in twenty twenty-two. That is based on a lot of different factors, pandemic among them, but also the aftermath of Hurricane Ida. Those numbers have come down significantly, but they're still higher than what they had been just prior to twenty twenty-two. The numbers had been on the decline. I would point out that your way home, the county's homelessness initiative started in January twenty fourteen. So these numbers are showing the the numbers of homeless people in the county just after that. So they have been on the decline. Hopefully, we can continue to to reverse this, this, I don't even know what the dot was, this this trend of the increase. That being said, there are special needs housing and resources scattered throughout the county. It's not just the worst town. Chalk is obviously something that has closed recently and that certainly affected where people can go for or emergency housing, but there are resources spread out in other municipalities here. So that's what I wanted to lead to, this emerging trend. Scott and I and others in this office are spending sizable amount of time talking about what comes next. This is a conversation that I think is just getting started. How can we address this, this lack of affordability here? County obviously has the Homes For All Initiative that Scott and I work on to promote housing affordability and also how to just even talk about housing affordability. Many of our community planners are working on municipal ordinances to bring more flexibility to to new housing construction. There are developers who want to try something different, but don't have the financial resources to afford land costs here to to build something a little bit denser. There's also this new resource that was released by the State Planning Board on housing affordability and inclusionary zoning. It's really interesting to see what other communities are trying. And there's this, this newly released bill in the State House that would, in theory, provide for housing affordability as a part of any new residential development project. I'm not sure where it's going to go, but it's it's something that I've never seen before. I mean, I've seen it elsewhere, but not here. So I'm I'm curious to see where this goes. But the catch is that this trend relies on municipal action. The construction of housing here depends entirely on the municipalities' planning code. It's what allows us to do what we do here. It's what allows communities to zone for housing, but the the language in the MPC is very limited. It really only requires that communities zone for these types of housing units. I literally copied and pasted this from the MPC. Single-family and two-family homes, multifamily dwelling units. I don't even know what a reasonable range means, but that's what you get. And mobile homes and mobile home parks. That is all the communities are required to do. It takes, I guess, a little bit of creativity to go beyond that, but I'm hoping that some of the things that I, that I pointed out on the prior slide will help push things in the right direction. So that's what I've got on housing before Steve asks his hard-hitting questions. I don't have a conclusion yet because I feel like we are just getting started with these topics and presentations. We have a lot more to think about. We got four more topics for you in July. But I do think on a very high level that we're seeing a lot of change that's taking place. There's a lot happening. I fully expect that we will all be commuting to work on e-bikes in the near future, but um, but there's a lot. I mean, planning is something that's always changing. So I do think that this idea of change and how it affects the work that we do is really crucial for us to be turned to. That being said, I want to thank all of the staff here at the planning commission that have been working on these reports. It's a big project, much bigger than I anticipated. The more we work on it, the more things we think about that we forgot to include in this project. So that's why we've got two more of these to do in September for you. But truly, I I couldn't do this without the rest of you and Chloe in particular. So I'm looking forward to seeing where this goes next.
Any questions for Ann on housing?
None for me. Thank you. Mark Toppin.
Great job, Ann, as always. Thank you. No hard questions.
Jonathan?
Thanks, Sam. Nothing here.
So my other comment was, you know, one thing that's becoming two, actually two comments to keep, keep in consideration. One trend that we're starting to see is institutional purchasing of single-family homes. In the sense, not institutionals like group homes and stuff like that. I'm talking about institutional buying to rent those homes. It's starting to become a large trend in first ring suburbs where venture capital groups are pooling together money and they're purchasing single-family homes to rent them and maintain them as institutional purchases, you know, within their group. And it's going to become more of a burden on municipality because there are so many steps removed from the person who's actually taking care of the home. It seems to be increasing more now because interest rates are higher. And they're the ones with the capital to go in and purchase these and be able to amortize them out over a longer period of time than maybe a single-family person who's just, or a new family that's trying to buy something and their buying power is less because interest rates are higher. That's one thing that's going to become, I think, is going to become an issue. Demographic issue, demographic connections is that there was just a report that came out in New Economic Study, but New Economic data that came out that the generations trying to remember exactly, certainly the younger generation between, I guess, let's say between eighteen and forty are not driving the economy right now because they're spending less. And a lot of that is wrapped around the fact that they're not buying or purchasing large items like vehicles. I mean, we've talked about this before, how the younger generation is becoming much less of a vehicle purchasing, automobile purchasing generation. Now, whether that continues as they as they get older and you know, start to have families and stuff like that changes is the question. But that also correlates to their spending in their housing, their renting housing because they want things closer to locations that they can easily get to, whether it be by a bike or pedestrian or whatever. Or some type of public transportation. And I think that started to see this. So they're, you're fine investing more money in their housing in the sense of renting than they are because they're not purchasing, they're not purchasing other items that would also require them to allocate certain, certain amounts of income to those purchases like a car. But that was one of the biggest things that came out of the last economic bad. It was that in this economy, just keep going, seems to be driven by people my age and older as opposed to, you know, people who might say, because I don't want to guess everybody's age, but people younger than me.
Stephen asked, is that national data or regional?
National data. Because it was part of the, it was part of the It was part of the last rounding inflation numbers that came out from the Department of
And and just to be clear, the 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 corporate acquisition of
What's that?
Corporate acquisition of single-family homes. You mentioned institution a couple of times. You weren't suggesting or or
Financial institution.
Yeah, that that a corporation or venture capital firm buying houses and having turn them into rentals as opposed to turn them into
No, no, it's, it's buying them to rent them. Except being in Atlanta. Exponentially, yeah. Yeah, it's happening all over and it's, it's problematic for municipalities because as I said, they they're less of a, they're they're not
They're absentee landlords, basically.
Yeah, I I I don't know that they're, I don't know, let's stay away from whether they're absentee. I think they're just harder to get engaged in issues that are occurring. So.
And and see, one final question, have you or anyone else on the board seen local trends on that? A lot of media coverage has has shown data that shows this is happening in southern and western cities. And they've said that it's not so much in northern D's, but having to start to see.
I think the the kick-up of interest rates has has kicked in the heart of here. So I think we're starting to see, you know, if you look, you look at a year or two ago, you put a house up for sale and it it was gone in ten days. you know, put a house up for sale and it, it was gone in ten days. Figure what the average, you know, sale rate was, sale at the time, but it was, but now that interest rates have kicked up and you know, everybody talks about how high they are, but in relative terms, they're still not that high here for all, you know, economy or housing. Um, but people's expectations and, um, of what they can purchase for a house is is less now because they're paying more in interest. And that's attracting, that's bringing in more of these institutional buyers. Yeah, so I, I mean, it may not be as great as some of the other areas in the nation, but I think it's still going to become. I think it's going to, I think it's going to roll more and more, as Jonathan said, and so I think it's just going to grow more than it's going, it's not going to decrease, right? So anyhow, those are my comments about that. So I want to, I guess, speak for the board. Thanks for everybody for putting those together and look forward to the next round of conversations. And hopefully our comments and questions and stuff, um, were helpful to try to frame where you're at with the next stuff.
Take your vitamins, folks.
Alright, Scott, you want to hit us with the direct issue report?
Yes, thank you. Um, I'll start with staff news. Um, first on our intern program, uh, I have a couple new interns to introduce. What I do, um, something I'm I'm both excited and also embarrassed to say. Um, we we are happy that our current newest interns, uh, are being paid. Um, in the past, that has not been the case, and that's unfortunate. Um, again, since we're not proud of it. Um, but this is through the ARPA program, through a co- core collaboration with MCIU. Uh, there is a system in place that has provided us with the summer internship opportunities, uh, with the, uh, decent salary or second, I guess, wage, but, um, the bad news is, this is a, right now, a one time thing. Um, we don't have ongoing system to support it. So I'll be pursuing, I am pursuing the ability to pay interns in the future through our budget process and uh, wish me luck on that. Um, but we want to welcome, uh, here we have, uh, two, two interns, Jake Girardi and Austin Mosby. I'll keep them separate because as I talk, they might keep interchanging their backgrounds and they're probably in the. Uh, we'll start with Jake Girardi there, uh, if you want to acknowledge, stand up and acknowledge himself. Um, he's a graduate student in city regional planning at Temple University. Uh, we also go as undergrad and originally from Scranton, PA. I don't know if he comes to us, so with an interest in environmental and sustainability planning. Um, uh, is it, do you want to jump to that?
Um, no, I'm just, uh, actually really excited to be, uh, here in Montgomery County because, uh, I don't have as much experience, especially because, like, mostly all my projects were Philadelphia related, so uh, it's awesome to sit around in my horizon. So, yeah, definitely happy to be here.
And our other new intern, both of them start Monday, by the way, in the, or eight week term. Uh, Austin Mosby is a grad student in urban regional planning at the University of Central Florida. Uh, although he has local roots, uh, receives his undergraduate from Temple as well and originally hails from Sauterton, uh, now is out of Naprow. Uh, and his, his major interest being transportation planning.
Yep, I'm also very happy to be here, very excited, um, and thankful and eager to learn and get that hands on experience and and hope to jump into the transportation plane all in the near future. So thank you.
Thanks, guys. Uh, on the, uh, permanent position front, I have more good news. Uh, we actually have hires to announce. Uh, very relieved, uh, we have a senior community planner, starting on July third, Tim Staub. He comes out of Rutgers, uh, and I think is from New Jersey in general. Uh, that'll be twenty Eric's, uh, section, uh, next month. And this, uh, also on the same date, we'll have a new assistant manager of design planning, uh, under Patty, Erin, uh, if I get it right, Beely. Um, uh, she is from Philadelphia, uh, currently, I'll, uh, forget where she comes originally, but she came, uh, graduated from Cal State Polytech University with her masters in Drexel as a undergrad. Uh, comes to us from a few firms in the Philadelphia area. Uh, and we're excited, um, to have both of those positions finally filled. Uh, we still have open a, a senior county data planner. Um, fingers crossed on that front as well, and nothing to announce, but working on that. And a community planner too, uh, position, uh, still open, well, senior GIs coordinator. Uh, so that's all on that. Um, other updates, the SRPRA, uh, uh, Schoolville River Passenger Rail Authority, uh, update. Just wanted to, I told you before, the corridor ID application is into the Federal Railway Administration. Uh, a team, including myself and, uh, Chester County and our director, uh, Tom Prawley went to DC last week to sit down with Amtrak. Have a very productive meeting, um, very positive, uh, feelings came out of that. Um, if we get into the quarter ID program, we'll be off and running with Amtrak as a partner. Uh, and looking to, uh, um, take that into the next phases. So the first phase, we can actually get started on, we have a seven hundred fifty thousand dollar grant uh, that's obtained through KC and now being issued to the FRA. Uh, that'll allow us to start on an alternative routes analysis even before we find out if we're in the program uh, with no local match, so it's, uh, very fortuitous and, uh, exciting to have uh, a transportation project that has has a lot of positives, um, momentum behind it. Um, the, uh, the Monco twenty forty grant program that we heard about earlier, uh, there will be a meeting later this month with, uh, an assembly of, uh, several municipal managers to get feedback on the program. I believe June twenty-sixth is when we have that, we have, as well as, uh, uh, some people, uh, some of our board members, uh, and some committee. And then we'll get those same board members together, uh, later, probably in July, uh, to have an internal conversation on, uh, what kind of recommendations want. So working on that. Um, the note on legislation, I I mentioned in the past, um, local transportation funding authorization, uh, most recently was referred to as House Bill nine oh two. We have been advocating for, uh, getting local support and legislator support. Uh, there is a new bill that is essentially the same bill, um, very few minor differences. It's now House Bill thirteen oh seven. And the big difference is it's in the local government committee as opposed to the transportation committee. This is all the mechanisms of, uh, uh, trying to get something done in Harrisburg. Um, but Septa's helped driving that, but it's very important to us, both with public transit as well as, uh, roadways and transportation, uh, funding, uh, issue. Um, Agricultural Preservation Board, we conducted our annual tour of applicants led by Steve Zabinski and Ann Leiberguberger uh, through the county about a week ago. And then yesterday was the farm board meeting where they met an executive session to consider on offers for the twenty twenty-three funding round. Uh, I can't give you the details, other than we did, so the board did select thirteen farms, uh, to make offers to. Which is a, a impressive amount. Uh, the farms tend to be smaller on average than they were. Uh, so I think we get more for the buck, but property values aren't cheap either. So, um, I think that's, uh, both a testament to the investment counties making in that program as well as the state funding that is elaborated because of it. And, uh, and and I think the last couple of years reflect a very successful approach to trying to get more farms preserved. Uh, Septa, uh, just to update in the news, you may have heard, a couple of months ago, the Septa Board, um, did not advance a construction contract for the garage in Punchahockin that they, that was planning to build. Um, there's a meeting this week or and, uh, next, the next board meeting next week. Uh, hopefully to find out what the status will be. On that, it's an important project in Montgomery County, so we hope that it does, um, progress. Um, but there was, uh, was some pushback and some word hesitation set the level. So I just want to keep you updated on that. Um, and he has a gate for that for the introduction as much as we can from planning side. Uh, and then, as we just saw with, uh, on the other side of the region, uh, with ninety-five, uh, having alternative ways of of getting mass amount of people around is is pretty important these days. Um, and let's see, I think that's mainly it. Uh, I don't know, we want to talk later about the, um, subcommittee for the, uh, Community Planning Systems Contract or what's it?
Yeah, I think you have some thought, I'll, I'll see about that.
Okay, uh, other than that, you had the events list, uh, do you want to, uh, mention the Montgomery Awards Tour on June eleventh, July eleventh, which will be the day before our next board meeting? So, uh, I'm looking forward to that and the group of, uh, board members, these running Patty, myself and others, uh, to look at this year's nominations.
Um, so that, is that the definite now?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I sent it out, I sent out a invite.
So that's all.
Anything else from anybody before we adjourn?
Just turned to twelve o'clock.
Do I understand we don't have an August meeting?
Um, chances are we don't have an August meeting. We haven't had one, um, I think we'll decide that at the next agenda meeting, which is next week. And we'll determine whether it was any, so, so that I can handle and announce that in July. It looks like we will have that one August meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, with that, we're adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.